Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Spokane City Council Legislative Session for June 12th. You might note, we're having HVAC problems in City Hall, particularly in the City Council chamber, so we've got a door open to help that. We've got a security person, the audience, to monitor that, but thanks for your patience. We'll start with the roll call. Oh, no, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, actually. Please stand and join me.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to ask for the roll call, and then we have a special guest to sing the National Anthem.
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, and Councilmember Bingle is going to introduce our guest to sing the National Anthem.
All right, is this working? Yes. All right, so this is my friend Bella. She is seven years old. She goes to St. Charles Academy, everybody, and she's going to sing the National Anthem for us tonight. Are you ready?
We can all stand.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? And for the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you so much, Bella. All right, and staying within the context of the arts, thanks to Spokane Arts, we have another entry of poetry at the podium, and tonight we have appearing virtually Jill Charles, reading a poem, Climbing Down the Cliff. And Jill, take it away.
Thank you. Climbing down the cliff. I used to climb down the cliff among the jackpines, past blue bachelor button flowers, toward Qualchan Creek, where the golf course is now. One day, in high school, I finally climbed all the way down, through the woods, past the railroad tracks, where an engineer waved to me from her train. I touched the water of the creek, my first great adventure. I would grow up, travel to Italy and Ireland, see the castles and colosseums, yet I never felt so proud as climbing down that cliff. Thank you.
Jill, thank you for being with us tonight. Councilmember Stratton has your certificate, but we'll get it to Spokane Arts and get it to you.
Yep, we'll get it to you in the mail.
Yep.
Thanks.
All right, we have three proclamations tonight. The first is Juneteenth Proclamation, Councilmember Wilkerson. And if Michael Bethely is here, he could come up to the podium to be the recipient.
He didn't bring your partner?
He doesn't want to.
Oh, I understand. Welcome. City of Spokane proclamation. Whereas on June 19th, 1865, the news finally arrived in Galveston, Texas, that despite slave owners withholding the information, the Emancipation Proclamation had freed all enslaved persons two and a half years earlier, now allowing for their freedom after decades of disenfranchisement. And whereas this day now serves as an emphasis on the celebration of the life, joy, heritage, and culture that the African-American community shares, along with a day to measure the progress that has been made in the realm of accomplishments and contributions in Spokane and across the nation. And whereas this day is a commitment to the African-American community regarding the continued perseverance towards equality and the acknowledgement that there is still work to be done regarding systemic racism, income inequality, and access to resources such as education. Now therefore, I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2023, as Juneteenth Celebration Day in Spokane and urge all citizens to join with me in honoring the past while reflecting on the present and setting our sights onward to a better future while celebrating the strength and power of the African-American community.
Thank you. Thank you for this. I just want to reiterate that this is a celebration of community as well, and that we're just, the opportunity to bring to light the remembrance of what Juneteenth is representing, but at the same time, bringing together community and uplifting community. And in the spirit of that, we're having the Pillar Awards Friday night at the Fox Theater. It's free for the public to come, so everybody who's here, come on in. It's a black carpet event, so a semi-formal, come dress up and have fun. And then we're also having a Father's Day feast on Saturday at SCC to celebrate fathers and their families, which is also a free opportunity for meals, for the families to eat in food, and just to be able, again, to uplift community. And so, representing the Inland Northwest Juneteenth Coalition, we appreciate the time. Thank you.
And also, let's remember that we have the Resource Fair in celebration at the MLK Center.
Yes, ma'am.
From 11 to 3 on that Saturday.
Yes, at the MLK Center. And then, I think there's a movie night that the Carl Maxi Center might be putting on as well, that evening on Saturday, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and now, there is a Father's Day proclamation, Councilmember Bingle, and it's going to be received by Ron Howenstein from Spokane Fatherhood Initiative. Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, that was a great segue. Whereas the community of Spokane is proud to be known as the birthplace of Father's Day, thanks to the tireless efforts of Sonora Smart Dodd, who persuaded all pastors in Spokane to preach a sermon honoring the vital role of fathers and fatherhood on June 19th, 1910, and who launched a decades-long campaign that culminated in the national observance of Father's Day as the third Sunday in June by President Richard Nixon in 1972. And whereas men who take on the solemn duty of fatherhood are vitally important to the growth, development, and well-being of children, preparing them to become responsible, grounded, and successful adults, and the contribution of fathers as providers, teachers, coaches, counselors, and supporters is often taken for granted. And whereas our community is indebted to the work of organizations like the Spokane Fatherhood Initiative, which helps fathers strengthen their values, character, and commitment while also giving them parenting tools they need to be better dads, and the City of Spokane recognizes that fathers are vital threads in the fabric that makes Spokane a healthy and thriving community. Now therefore, I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim June 18th, 2023, as Father's Day in Spokane, and encourage all citizens to recognize the important role that fathers play in our community and express our gratitude for their many contributions. Yes. And before I turn it over to you, Ron, if we could have all the fathers in the room stand and be honored and recognized as well?
Yes.
Thank you, Jonathan, the Councilman, and the mayor. The first thing I want to say is I deeply appreciate public servants. Being an elected official is extremely challenging, and just on behalf of the fathers of Spokane, thank you for the time that you put in, the sacrifice that you make to lead our city. We believe if we had better fathers, your job would be a lot easier. So, while we want to celebrate and honor the glory and tradition and importance of fathers and all the joy that comes with that, we acknowledge that fatherlessness is a huge problem in our society. We're founded on the principle that fatherlessness is a root cause of nearly all of society's problems. So we approach that by teaching fatherhood classes. In the past nearly five years, we've issued over 500 certificates of completion to men who've gone through a very rigorous, evidence-based fatherhood training program. We have an amazing graduation rate of 93%, compared to a national average using the same curriculum across the country of about 50%. So perhaps it's a tradition that Spokane has of honoring fathers because Father's Day was born here. So I'm deeply honored to represent this organization that is volunteer-led, on behalf of our donors and the men who've graduated. I just want to say how proud I am to be at the top of this. But let me give you just an insight in how I think fatherlessness affects your work. Fatherlessness affects every cop, every social worker, every homeless shelter, and every taxpayer. The damaging consequences of father-absent homes are seen in every prison, every jail, and every drug, alcohol, and mental health treatment program. Every day, many of the kids who grow up without fathers end up in the principal's office, the school counselor's office, or the school nurse's office. Some get expelled, and some get sent to juvenile detention. Some are kidnapped and sold into prostitution. Some end up in the city morgue. This has really driven home to me. A couple of years ago, we had a booth at the Hilliard Festival, and three teenagers come walking up, boy, girl, boy, girl, boy, girl, boy. Turns out, they're all 15. And without a word of introduction or preamble, the girl in the middle says, "Is this where I come to get a father? What do I have to do to get a father? Will you be my father?" And to me, that just represents the pain of this fatherless generation. So we're extremely proud to have an organization and a program that helps build fathers, because if we build better fathers, we'll build better families. Better families are essential to a better community, so thank you.
Thanks for coming down. All right, and then we have one more proclamation. Infrastructure Apprenticeship Celebration Week. Councilmember Stratton is going to read that. I don't think we have anyone in the audience to receive it, but go ahead.
The individual who this goes to did write a thank you, and Councilmember Bingle's going to read it for us.
Okay.
Okay. Whereas our city, state, and nation's infrastructure is critical to citizen safety and well-being, our economy, and our national defense, and the pipe trades, including plumbers, pipe fitters, sprinkler fitters, welders, and HVAC/RR technicians are among the building trade companies and workers that build, maintain, and innovate processes and technologies that strengthen our infrastructure. And whereas the apprenticeship "Earn While You Learn" model of passing knowledge and skills to the next generation of master builders has proven successful for millennia. In partnership with Eastern Washington Contractors and other employers, the Spokane Plumbers and Steam Fitters, UA Local 44, provide the highest level of apprenticeship training in the pipe trades, requiring up to 10,000 hours. And whereas Blake Cooper, an apprentice member of UA Local 44, based in Spokane, recently earned the title of Washington State Pipe Trades Champion Apprentice Plumber, Blake will represent Washington State at the United Association of Journeymen and Apprentices of the Plumbing and Pipe Fitting Industry of the United States and Canada Regional 11-State Apprentice Competition this week. Now therefore, I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim June 11 through 17, 2023, as Infrastructure Apprentice Celebration Week in Spokane, and encourage all of our citizens to wish our own Blake Cooper well as he continues to compete among the best apprenticeship plumbers in North America and is a shining example of so many apprentice women and men from all walks of life who are strengthening our society through their dedication and diligence to continue America's tradition of bringing forth the most highly skilled, productive, and innovative workers in the world.
Blake's response is pretty short and to the point. He says, "Thank you, Mayor and City Council for this honor. I won't take up your time with too many words. I'll let my training and hands do the talking for me this week."
All right, we're going to turn to our formal agenda, and we have some ground rules when things change a little bit from these festivities at the beginning. We're going to start with open forum, followed by various ordinances and resolutions that people can testify. At open forum, you have up to two minutes. On the rest of the agenda, you have up to three minutes. This timer here will turn yellow when you have one minute left, and when it turns red, your time is up. I will generally call you down in groups of three people to start. The first person would be at the podium. Other people would be as close as you can to the podium so that you can get there more quickly. So if you're in the back, you can kind of move up closer. So on open forum, you can talk about anything that relates to city business, except for anything that's on tonight's agenda. And if you start to go on something on tonight's agenda, I'll probably interrupt you and let you testify then on the agenda item instead of in open forum. We have some ground rules, and then when you're on the ordinances and resolutions, you need to keep your comments to those resolutions and ordinances as opposed to general things. We have a few ground rules, because this is a limited public forum. One is, even though we just spend a lot of time clapping and hooting and hollering for good people, we don't do clapping or booing for people who are speaking or really make any noise or distraction, whether you like what they say or don't like what they say. We ask, if you're in the audience, please don't engage in side talk. You may think you're being quiet, but every week, almost somebody is texting me that they can't hear because somebody's talking near them. We do have space in the Chase Gallery, and the sound is out there. So if you do want to have a conversation with someone, you can go out there and chat with them. We ask, in terms of visual displays, that you don't wave signs, buttons, hats, t-shirts are fine. We do allow people to put pictures on the screen or video, but not sound, through our system. People can read things if they're related to city business. We ask that you don't kind of make a disturbance by raising your voice too loud or using vulgarities, pounding on the podium, things like that. And I think that's, for open forum, we have 15 slots each week of up to two minutes each, and we prioritize it by people who haven't spoken this calendar month. There's a couple of people who signed up who have spoken this month, and we have quite a few people signed up. So if you spoke last week, you're probably not going to be able to speak this week. But with that said, the first person is Jim McDevitt, and then followed by Mr. McDevitt is Greg Zabo, and then Justice for All. One other thing I was just going to say before Mr. McDevitt starts is that we don't typically answer questions at the open forum or that. We don't respond to you, and it's not because we're being rude, but that's in our council rules. Occasionally, if we have a point of information that we think would be helpful, a council member may raise it. But with that, welcome, Mr. McDevitt.
Jim McDevitt, City of Spokane, Council President, Member of the City Council. I want to address two issues tonight, and I appreciate your attention. First, the question of ethics and a potential violation of the Code of Judicial Conduct. Second, the improper use of the Emergency Ordinance provision of the City Code. First issue, congratulations to the Council President on his recent nomination to the Court. Following his nomination, he became a, quote, "judicial candidate," as the term is defined in the CJC. Along with that nomination comes certain restrictions, such as, number one, prohibition on publicly endorsing a candidate for any non-judicial office, such as council president or mayor, including opposition to or disparaging statements directed to the current mayor. Second, a very gray area involving separation of powers and the independence, integrity, and impartiality of the judiciary included in the CJC and as applied to a judicial candidate that prohibits the statements that would reasonably affect the outcome or impair the fairness of any matter pending or impending in any court and in connection with issues likely to come before the court, including pledges, promises, or commitments inconsistent with the impartial performance of the duties as a judge. At least two of the emergency ordinances before you tonight involve issues that may be subject to litigation. Council President's support or opposition to these ordinances are such a pledge, promise, or commitment, and in my view, violate the CJC, to which he is... or commitment, and in my view, violate the CJC, to which he is obligated. Certainly, the appearance of fairness. To avoid any question of impropriety and in the interest of judicial integrity, if I were a judicial candidate, I would resign, or at least recuse myself, on any issue that could end up in court. My second issue, an emergency ordinance is supposed to be, quote, "necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, or safety." To use this vehicle now to maintain a veto-proof majority merely because the Council President is soon leaving is an abuse of the emergency ordinance provision and is simply wrong. Thank you for listening, and I've given copies of my statement to the...
Thanks for your time, Mr. McDevitt. Greg Zabo, and then Justice for All, and then Nicholas Shively. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Council President and City Council Members. My name is Greg Zabo. I work at the Lighthouse for the Blind, and I would like to discuss the issue with Lime scooters and e-bikes. As a service dog user, I find it very difficult to travel the sidewalks of downtown Spokane when multiple groups of riders are coming either at us or behind us on the scooters at a very fast pace. I know that they're not supposed to ride on the sidewalks, but the response I typically hear from riders are, they don't feel safe riding in the streets. I would like to suggest that we come up with some safer infrastructure and ways and means for them to feel more comfortable riding on the streets, because myself, as a pedestrian and as a guide dog user, do not feel safe when I'm in downtown Spokane. My dog is trained to avoid vehicles, so he is not used to a vehicle being on the sidewalk. And when they're coming at us, he really doesn't know how to react or respond. He could take me into the street because he thinks it might be a safer spot. Or if there's vehicles that come up behind us, they often frighten him, and he is not aware of them approaching. So I would just request that somebody at the proper level of the city look at some solutions for preventing the riders in downtown Spokane from riding on the sidewalks. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time. And Justice for All, and then Nicholas Shively, and then Maygrav Flatman.
Hello. My name is Justice for All. First off, I want to address, there's a lot of confusion on what ordinances are being put up for today. If you can actually do respond to that, because I have no idea what I signed up for and what has been removed. That is my public speaking time that has been removed after I had signed up. Terrible. We have seen the cycle of Spokane. Rent is still rising, and more and more people find themselves unhoused, as shown in the point-in-time count. More than half of Spokane is renters, and half of those are rent burdened, meaning they're paying more than 30% of their income in rent. Of that half, they're paying more than 50%. Once Spokane turns those out who are renters into the unhoused, our unhoused community grows. And that does not just mean those without fathers, but whole families. Once those people are out on the street, we find every way to criminalize them. That's the drug ordinance, which I'm not sure, again, if we're talking about that. The parks ordinance, once again, I'm not sure if we're talking about that, or if I'm allowed to talk about that, because I'm not sure what has been removed from this agenda.
Well, the only thing...
Hold on.
Well, I just want to tell you, and I'll stop your time for a second. Just, oops. No, I really stopped your time. The, I'm just going to do a point, because you raised a good point. The park ordinance pieces have all been put off until the 26th, if I'm recollecting on that. Now, the ordinance where you could sign up, that showed what things were going to be on tonight. So the signup sheet, those were...
I signed up at 5:00. I signed up for speaking on the parks ordinance, which was the first reading. I signed up...
Oh, no, you can speak, the first reading is on, so that is on. So you can speak on that at the first reading.
So everything I signed up for is still going to be part of...
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you. I'm thrown off, but I just, this has been very confusing today. Once again, this is not how we inform the public, and yet again, this is not something that has been translated outside of English. We want more people to be involved in local government. How can we do that when it's not, one, safe for them half of the time? They don't have a chance to even understand what's going on, because you change things last minute. That is just not fair. We don't have a lot of time to even prepare beforehand. We start on, we get the agenda on Friday, when it's the current agenda, and we're here to speak on Monday, oh, sorry, sometimes it is Thursday. And I believe the charter says it's supposed to be three business days, so that's also confusing to me. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. All right. Nicholas is coming next. And thanks for your supporter getting you to the microphone. Thank you. You have up to two minutes.
Thank you, Council President and Council Members. I come to before you to talk about the thing what Greg was talking about, the Lime bikes and scooters is hazardous for people who are blind like me, and also profoundly hard deaf. I work at the Lighthouse for the Blind, and my name is Nicholas Shively. I take the bus to and from work, and I have to go through downtown Plaza to make my travel arrangement. While I'm trying to transit from one bus to another to get to my destination, I have to take the post-street sidewalk, which has lots of barrier and obstacle for a blind person to navigate. What makes it even worse is the Lime bike stands right in the middle of the whole sidewalk lengthwise, making it very difficult for me to navigate. And sometime, I knock them over, and sometime hurting other people with it, and I don't want to do that anymore. I just need somebody to help me with that problem. The second problem I have is finding the Lime bike near a bus stop sign, which makes it very difficult for a blind or anybody with disabilities to get on the bus or get off without tripping or falling or hurting other people or damaging other items, such as cars, or buildings, or whatnot. And so I know there's an enforcement problem sometime to engage in this, but I thought with the security at the SDA Bus Plaza, could be a big part of that, trying to make sure those Lime bikes or scooters can be put in a designated area or moved to away from the walking path for a blind or other disabilities be able to travel. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you so much for coming down, sharing that with us. Next, Maygrav Flatman from on telephone, star three. Maygrav, if you're there, you have up to two minutes.
In 2017, Spokane prosecutors charged a child with a $10 theft. They refused his public defender's offer of community service, and they forced an expensive trial. Deputy Prosecutor Stephanie Collins told the Inlander that in the Spokane County Prosecutor's Office, they, quote, "consider how to hold someone accountable." Again, this was a child with a $10 theft. This punitive and overzealous prosecution has been the norm in Spokane since Spokane County Prosecutor Larry Haskell took office in 2015. Quoted by the Inlander as saying, "Accountability is very important, but rehabilitation is not a statutory requirement." Larry Haskell in 2022 told the Spokesman Review, he believes, quote, "that offenders need to serve longer prison terms." Judge Marian Moreno says that Haskell's, quote, "overarching policies do not make for smart justice." Collins has also spoken out against Haskell's policies, saying, quote, "We are betraying the most vulnerable in our society." Jail does not fix problems, but it can lose people their jobs, lose them their housing, lose people their stability, and in extreme cases, it can lose their lives. This downward spiral feeds on itself, as housing, once lost, is difficult to reclaim, while livable jobs and future documents almost are impossible to obtain without an address. Spokane does not need a new jail. Spokane needs more mental health services, more compassionate addiction treatment centers, more behavior health centers, and more free public spaces available. Spokane's law enforcement and prosecutors have time and again publicly stated that they will prosecute to the fullest extent of the law. Incarceration does not solve problems. No new jail. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing with us tonight. Next is Zach Widmer, then Christine Schuler, and then Scott Ward. Welcome. You have up to two minutes.
Thank you. So, we recently went to the traffic calming thing. It was really awesome, really loved it. One of the things we talked about during it, we got some stats about Woodside Avenue. And Woodside Avenue, you've probably heard way too much about it already, but on certain stretches of it, it can have up to 1,800 cars to 3,000 cars a day going, and you can double-check the person with the stats, but they said speeds from 28 to 32 were very common. And I really want to ask you, I'm a person who lives on Woodside Avenue, and I'm about to be a father in about a month and a half. Would you like to raise your children on a street that has up to 3,000 cars a day going 32 miles an hour? That's a question that I'm asking myself right now, and a lot of times, it seems like the answer for people like me is, "Don't live in the city." And I think that's a shame. I really like living where I'm living. I am five minutes from two wonderful grocery stores, and I'm a terrible cook. Forget all my needs that I need, and so getting to those grocery stores really quickly, I can actually make food for my family. Anyway, one of the things we said is that there weren't a lot of infrastructure options because the speed limit's 25, and they're not really that far above the speed limit. And so one of the things I think about is, goodness gracious, what if we lower the speed to 20 miles per hour on non-arterial streets? You know, if people are not using an arterial, I don't think they really need to be going 30 miles an hour. You know, that's kind of the thing. If it's going to be 25 miles an hour and everyone's going to be going 30, we got to start paying attention to that. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming down. All right, Christine. And after Christine is Scott Ward, and then Kim Schmidt. Welcome. You have up to two minutes.
Hello. I'm Christine Schuler. Breeam Beck's. I came to talk to you about when you guys write laws, people who write rules and people who write laws need to pay attention to every tiniest detail about that. Otherwise, you're writing bad laws. When you leave that chair, like, if you write a rule and it's based on your opinion because you're sitting in that chair, you're not going to be in that chair forever. Somebody else is going to be in that chair, and now their opinion is going to have to be the rule, when rules should just be made with, you know, for a court of law. And my example is, okay, I have a birth certificate that says my legal name is Christine Schuler. It says my birthday's in December. It says who my parents are, my legal parents, or my legal birthday, all of that. It's all a lie. It's not my true name at all. My true name is Seven. I was abducted at birth and a slave for over 47 years. I didn't get a paycheck. I was a slave, a real slave, and my name was Seven. And so your rule about open forum, where it says people are supposed to sign up with their true name, that's not a legal name. And if you're going to be in a courtroom, be in a judge, you need to know the difference between a true name and a legal name. True parents and legal parents. True birthday and legal birthday. All that kind of stuff. So I want you to fix that, or I'm going to just start signing up with my true name. Okay? It's in your open forum rules that people are supposed to sign up. The word should say "legal name." If that's what you want people to put is a legal name, that's what you should write.
Thanks for coming down. And Scott Ward, and then Kim Schmidt, and then Caleb Collier.
Hi, I'm Scott Ward. I'm from the Spokane Valley. I'm a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. I want to first acknowledge that we are on the unceded land of the indigenous people of Spokane. And we believe as a party that this land should all be their sovereign land to this day. When the Spokane tribe was in control of this land, there was no homelessness, and they shared in a great salmon harvest every year. And the purpose of that harvest was to make sure everybody had their needs met. It wasn't about profiting. It wasn't about hoarding resources. And so I think we should aspire to have that kind of community. And so I think we should just return this land to their control. Also, I want to talk about an apartment complex that a few months ago got bought up by a big Denver company. This apartment complex was called the Court Arthur Complex, and it was up on 30th and Arthur. And it had affordable rents for years, and families lived there and could afford to live there. It got bought up and changed to the Jackson, and they immediately increased rent $500 and gave people 30 days, which is against the law. And so 20 families had to move out. And so again, this is the lack of affordability, the lack of community care we have, where people are profiting off of people's ability to just live on this land. And I think we need rent control, and we need social housing. A lot of effort has been put towards criminalizing things in this body, and we do start actually coming up with solutions that protect people's livelihoods. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. All right, Kim Schmidt, and then Caleb Collier, and then Danny Green. Welcome. You have up to two minutes.
Hey. Kim Schmidt from the Valley. Seeing as we're here to talk about Spokane city business, I thought I would bring something up from 2016. It's an oldie but a goodie. If you recall, that's when the then candidate Donald J. Trump was in town for a rally. Well, come to figure, he still owes the city $65,000. Now, where this becomes a problem is, is that he was just indicted on 37 federal charges, 31 of which are related to the Espionage Act. He did a really good thing when he was in office, raising the minimum sentence on the Espionage Act from five years to 10 years. So I really think that our city leadership needs to hurry up and collect that money, because you may be wondering, like, $65,000? Our city has a budget of, I think it's like 1.2 billion or something for this year? Well, what could we do with 65,000? I don't know, maybe put some bathrooms in our trench shelter, maybe get some bathrooms in this park out here, maybe get some working water fountains, some trash cans at work. I was down at Pride the other day, and I was trying to throw my trash away, and the trash bin wouldn't go down all the way so I can put my trash in it. You know, there's a lot of things we could actually use that money for. So yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Caleb Collier, welcome. You have up to two minutes. And after Mr. Collier is Danny Green, and then Reggie Camps.
The Gospel According to John, the deity of Jesus Christ. In the beginning was the Word, and the Word was with God, and the Word was God. He was in the beginning with God. All things came into being through Him, and apart from Him, nothing came into being that has come into being. In Him was life, and the life was the light of men. The light shines in the darkness, and the darkness did not comprehend it. The witness John. There came a man sent from God, whose name was John. He came as a witness to testify about the light, so that all might believe through Him. He was not the light, but He came to testify about the light. There was the true light, which coming into the world enlightens every man. He was in the world, and the world was made through Him, and the world did not know Him. He came to His own, and those who were His own did not deceive Him. But as many as received Him, to them He gave the right to become children of God, even to those who believe in His name, who were born not of blood, nor the will of the flesh, nor the will of man, but of God. The Word made flesh, and the Word became flesh and dwelt among us. And we saw His glory. Glory is of the only begotten from the Father, full of grace and truth. John testified about Him and cried out, saying, "This was He of whom I said, 'He who comes after me has a higher rank than I, for He existed before me.'" For of His fullness we have all received, and grace upon grace. For the law was given through Moses; grace and truth was realized through Jesus Christ. No one has seen God at any time, the only begotten God, who is in the bosom of the Father. He has explained Him. The testimony of John. This is the testimony of John. When the Jews sent Him to priests and Levites from Jerusalem to ask Him, "Who are you?" And He confessed, and did not deny, but confessed, "I am not the Christ." They asked Him, "What then? Are you Elijah?" And He said, "I am not. Are you the prophet?" And He answered, "No." Then they said to Him...
That's the end of the two minutes? Thanks for coming down. Danny Green, then Reggie Camps, and then Marian and Douglas. Welcome. You have up to two minutes.
The Word of God says, "Then who are you? We need an answer for those who sent us."
Council President, point of order.
Yep.
Is this relating to city business?
Yep. One nation under God.
I will leave it, just hang on for a sec. I'll pause the time while we debate that. So there's a point of order of whether or not this reading relates to city business. I don't know if anyone has any comments. So just, please, no comments from the audience. That's not the time for that. So... That's not the time for that. So, Councilmember Bingle?
I would allow it.
What, do you think it's related to city business?
I think in that we are making decisions on behalf of the city, and this is a way that we help to determine our beliefs and views. Yeah, I think it relates to city business.
I would just say that there's lots of people. We had 27 people sign up today, and this means that other people don't have the opportunity to speak about city business.
Other comments from council members?
I guess, I would just say, I think strictly reading, it's not city business, but I think this could be reformatted to be very specific to city business.
Other comments? Councilmember Wokerson?
I will concur. If there, if the Word of God, which is, we're always needed, but in this venue, if there's a correlation to the city business, if there's an ordinance or a law that we're debating or other issues or resolutions, I would like to see the intersection of that as we go forward.
Councilmember Stratten?
I'll just be pretty straight. I mean, I'm looking at our agenda and all of the issues that we're dealing with on the agenda. Maintenance agreements, contract renewals, emergency ordinances related to the Ombudsman, the West Quadrant, Tiff, and West Central. I don't see a connection. I just don't. And I feel bad for people that have signed up that can't speak to the issues pertaining to the agenda. If there was a way to connect this, I would say absolutely, but I just logically, not religiously or spiritually, I just am not seeing a connection.
Councilmember Cathcart, and then Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, I would say, though, I think there has been many, many, many instances in the last few weeks, if not months, where we have entertained very much non-city business. And if this goes the way it's going, then I think I will be excruciatingly strict on what is city business going forward. So, just to be clear.
Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, we have plenty of comments that come in that aren't strictly city business but happenings in the city. This is something that's happening in our city. We have events that are related to this information and topic, and so I think there's plenty of reason to say this is city business for several reasons.
Councilmember Kinnear, do you have any comments?
Thanks, yeah. I think, no, this isn't city business, but as Councilmember Cathcart pointed out, we've not been consistent. So in order to be fair, we need to be consistent going forward.
Should we vote on it?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to give everyone a chance.
That was my question.
Yeah. So if you believe that this general line is out of order of our rules, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And if you're, I guess I need to-
You don't think it's out of order?
And if you don't think it's out of order, then you would say no.
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 No. And Councilmember Kinnear, did you have a vote?
Well, it's out of order, but that's the wrong question. Yes, it's out of order, and-
The motion, it was, Councilmembers opponent raised the point of order, so it's his point of order whether or not you endorse his point of view on it or not.
I endorse his point of view, but I think we have to go ahead and let the man speak.
Okay, so you don't endorse his point of view. Okay. Councilmember Cathcart?
I would just agree with what Councilwoman Kinnear said. I mean, I think, again, we have not treated this fairly over many weeks, months, since we passed these rules. And so I think it would be unfair to treat these individuals differently than we've treated others.
Councilmembers opponent?
Yeah, my last thing is that there are seven of us, and at any time, you can call point of order too, to help us. I mean, I forgot at the beginning of the previous person and remembered halfway through, so.
Oh, believe me, I'll remember from now on.
I'm going to rule in favor of the motion with the caveat that to the degree that you want to frame your quotes around city business and say, "This relates to this or that," and something like that, then that seems like that would be the thing. So I'll give you, I'll start your time over if you want to attempt to do that. I know you're-
Council President?
Yeah.
Can I challenge the Chair's ruling?
Well, that was, the vote was four to three.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Make the motion.
No, that's fine. So, yeah, so I voted with the majority, but I did sort of lay out a potential way forward. So there's a vote. If you're opposed to what I just stated, say, well, first, there could be debate about it, so. Do you have anything further to say about it? Okay. If you're opposed to the Chair's ruling, please say aye.
Aye.
So is this to let him speak?
My ruling was that he could speak if he contextualized it and explained why particular quotes were related to city business.
Okay, so if we're opposed-
So if you don't agree with that ruling, then you would be an aye. You would be in favor of Councilmember Bingle's motion.
I'm trying to let him speak, Karen, is what's happening.
That's what she's, he's trying to motion.
Without, without, without any-
Caveat.
Yeah, yeah. So all those in favor of Councilmember Bingle's point of view, say aye.
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 And opposed, no.
No.
No. Councilmember Kinnear?
No.
I didn't quite understand you, Councilmember.
I think she said no.
Okay, all right.
No.
Okay, so your objection fails at this time. So Mr. Green, if you would like to put your quotes in some context of city business, which, you're an adept speaker, I think you can do that. You can continue.
Well, I'll just go off the Bible-
All right, I'll start your time over.
Okay, thanks, man. So I believe this is the Word of God, right? And that really pertains about the city and our country. And as we look and see what our country's doing, and I don't know what a lot of you guys are, but it's really going the wrong way. And so the Word of God right here is one that teaches us how to be men and how to be women. That's what I believe. And that we need to stand up boldly for what we see is going around, even in the city, and the children, and all the things that are going on here. You know, we need to really understand, what's going on? What's going on? You know, you don't want to hear the Word of God, but the Word of God wants you to hear it. He really does. And sometimes we need to really understand the power that He has in us. And we need to stand boldly. You know what I mean? For all the things that are going on in this country, we're one nation under God, right? Do you guys believe that? Because we just did the Pledge of Allegiance again. We did "One Nation Under God." Do you believe that? That if we believe that, then let's live it, right? And let's let our city be the city that it's supposed to be, to be in the Word of God. Because this is the most important book ever. And that pertains right here to the city. The most important book that was ever written is right here, the Bible. It goes back thousands and thousands of years. Why would you not want to hear the Word of God? It pertains to the city. What goes on this last weekend and all that stuff, you know what I mean? That's what Christians need to stand up boldly and say, "Hey, enough is enough." You know what I mean? Enough is enough. We need to stand up boldly and say, "We can't do this. We can't live like this. We can't have you guys smashing us down and saying that we're not worthy." We are worthy. We're worthy. And this Bible right here is worthy. And each and every one of us needs to do that, to really read the Word of God. Do you guys know the Word of God? Do you know that we're one nation under God, that you're living the country right here that's all about? Our forefathers started all this. They came out of the pulpit, the pastors came out of the pulpit to fight for our country to have freedom. That's what we have.
Mr. Green, your two minutes is up.
So we need to stand boldly.
Thanks for coming down.
Council President, point of personal privilege, if I could. So one of the big issues that we deal with in the city of Spokane is addiction, and we don't know how to get a grapple on it. And Pastor Green has helped many, many, many people out of addiction by teaching them the teachings of Jesus Christ. In that way, I think it does pertain to city business. I think it's something that more people could embrace and might find freedom in that and would find freedom in that. And in that way, I think it pertains to city business. I appreciate you coming down and appreciate you sharing your position. Thank you.
All right. Next on my list is Reggie Camps, and then Marianne Douglas, and then Gary Douglas.
All right, so I'm going to go ahead and continue with this city business. And this is in John. Then they said to him, "Who are you, so that we may give an answer to those who sent us? What do you say about yourself?" He said, "I am the voice of the one crying in the wilderness. Make straight the way of the Lord, as Isaiah the prophet said. Now they had been sent from the Pharisees."
And Mr. Camps?
Yes, sir.
Could you just contextualize this on how it applies to city business?
Well, the way that it applies to city business, in truth, is, these are the, this is the city. These are the people that live in the city. This is who you're here to serve. This is what brought us to the place we are. I am one of those addicts that Pastor Green brought the Word of God to. I came off of these streets in Spokane. This is city business. 110% city business, because this saves lives in this city. Okay, so, "I am the voice of the one crying in the wilderness. Make straight the way of the Lord, as Isaiah the prophet said. Now they had been sent from the Pharisees. They asked Him and said to Him, 'Why then are you baptizing? If you are not the Christ, nor Elijah, nor the prophet,' John answered them, saying, 'I baptize in water, but among you stands one whom you do not know. It is He who comes after me, the thong of whose sandal I am not worthy to untie.' These things took place in Bethany, beyond the Jordan, where John was baptizing. The next day he saw Jesus coming to him and said, 'Behold, the Lamb of God, who takes away the sin of the world. This is He on behalf of whom I said. After me comes a man who has a higher rank than I, for He existed before me. I did not recognize Him, but so that He might be manifested to Israel, I came baptizing in water. John testified, saying, 'I have seen the Spirit descending as a dove out of heaven, and He remained upon Him. I did not recognize Him, but He who sent me to baptize in water said to me, He upon-
Mr. Camps, thanks. Your two minutes is up.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Marianne Douglas, and then Gary Douglas, and then Cindy Sehorn. Welcome. You have up to two minutes. And again, if you can contextualize connection between city business, it'd be great.
This is continuing with city business. I also am from the streets here in Spokane, and this is what saved my life through the Family of Faith Church, and so it pertains to our city. And I did not recognize Him, but He said, "But He who sent me baptized in water and said to me, 'He upon whom you see the Spirit descending and remaining upon Him, this is the one who baptizes in the Holy Spirit. And I myself have seen and have testified that this is the Son of God, Jesus' public ministry first converts.'" Again, the next day, John was standing with two of his disciples, and he looked at Jesus as he walked, and he said, "Behold, the Lamb of God." And the two disciples heard him speak, and they followed Jesus. And Jesus turned and saw them following, and said to them, "What are you seeking?" They said to him, "Rabbi," which translated means "teacher," "where are you staying?" He said to them, "Come, and you will see." So they came and saw where he was staying, and they stayed with him that day. It was about the 10th hour. One of the two who heard John speak and followed him was Andrew Simon Peter's brother. He first found his own brother, Simon, and said to him, "We have found the Messiah," which translated means "Christ." He brought him to Jesus. Jesus looked at him and said, "You are Simon, the son of John, and you shall be called Cephasus," which is translated "Peter." The next day, he decided to go to the Galilee. He found Philip, and Jesus said to him, "Follow me." Now Philip was from Bethedia, the city of Andrew and Peter. Philip found Nathaniel and said to him, "We have found him of whom Moses wrote in the law, and the prophets also wrote, 'Jesus, the Son of Joseph, from Nazareth.'" Nathaniel said to him, "Can anything be good from Nazareth?"
Ms. Douglas?
Mm-hmm.
That's two minutes.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. And then Gary Douglas, Cindy Sehorn, and James Duncan.
I'm also an addict that was saved by the Family of Faith Church. Jesus saw Nathaniel coming to him and said to him, "Here is truly an Israelite in whom there is no deceit." Nathaniel said to him, "How do you know Me?" Jesus answered and said to him, "Before Philip called you, when you were under the fig tree, I saw you." Nathaniel answered him, "Rabbi, you are the Son of God. You are the King of Israel." Jesus answered and said to him, "Because I said to you that I saw you under the fig tree, do you believe you will see greater things than these?" And he said to him, "Truly, truly, I say to you, you will see heaven opened and the angels of God ascending, descending on the son of man." Thank you.
Thanks for coming down.
Is there supposed to be a camera going all the time? This person's taking a lot of pictures. Is that-
There's, it's all on film if you're in here. Number 14, oh no, that was Gary Douglas, Cindy Sehorn. Sorry, Cindy. Welcome. I didn't see you. You have up to two minutes.
Thank you for giving me a chance. I also came from the streets of Spokane. I don't know if you guys were on the council, but I was on the streets and addicted to drugs and alcohol, and I am now almost two years sober. And it's because my belief in Jesus and His Father God. And all I want to say is, but all, but to all who believed in Him and accepted Him, He gave the right to become children of God. They are reborn, not with physical birth resulting from human passion or plan, but a birth that comes from God. And that's what happens when you come to God. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. All right, that brings us to the end of open forum, and we now go to consent agenda. No one signed up to speak on consent agenda, so Ms. Fister, if you could read it.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Item number one is deferred to July 10, 2023. Number two, purchase from Contract Design Associates Spokane of Justin Cubicle Walls for the Community and Economic Development Division, $186,244.13. Number three, value blanket renewal, one of three with Hitachi Zosen Inova USA LLC, Norcross, Georgia, for the purchase of feeder and great parts at the Waste Energy Facility from July 1, 2023.
Ms. Fister, just a moment. Again, people, if you would like to talk, if you could go outside, because it's hard to hear. Thanks. Continue on.
Item number three, value blanket renewal, one of three with Hitachi Zosen Inova USA LLC, Norcross, Georgia, for the purchase of feeder and great parts at the Waste Energy Facility from July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024. Total cost not to exceed $1,200,000 plus tax. Number four, contract renewal, three of four with United States Electric Corporation Olympia, Washington, for high voltage electrical maintenance and technical support services at the Waste Energy Facility from May 1, 2023 through April 30, 2024. Total cost not to exceed $275,000 plus tax. Number five, preventative maintenance agreement with Aero Concrete and Asphalt Specialties Spokane for 2023. Off-street parking lot repair and maintenance of the Nelson Services Center and Fire Training Center parking lots, $245,000 plus tax if applicable. Number six, contract renewal, one of two with Control Solutions Northwest Incorporated Spokane for HVAC preventative maintenance for the fire department and dispatch center facilities from July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024, $90,000. Number seven, contract amendment with Environment Control of Spokane for additional fire department facilities, janitorial services from June 1, 2023 to June 30, 2025, additional annual amount, $10,140 plus tax. Number eight, public works agreement with Pro Mechanical Services Incorporated Spokane for HVAC replacement at the Spokane Fire Department Facility located at 1610 North Rebecca Street, $98,023.70, including tax. Item number nine is deferred to June 26, 2023 agenda. Number 10, lowbed of Shamrock Paving Incorporated Spokane for Business Area Grind and Overlay Project, $2,828,828, an administrative reserve of $282,882.80, which 10% of the contract price will be set aside. Number 11, public works maintenance agreement with ABM Industry Groups LLC Spokane for Intermodal Facility Janitorial Services from June 1, 2023 through May 31, 2025, $360,000. Number 12, report of the mayor of pending claims and payments to previously approved Intermodal Facility Janitorial Services from June 1, 2023 through May 31, 2025, $360,000. Number 12, report of the mayor of pending claims and payments to previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library, through May 31, 2023, total $11,114,485.16. With Parks and Library claims approved with respective boards, warrants excluding Parks and Library, total $11,92,505.60.
All those in favor indicate-
Council President, can we take number two separately? Sorry.
Okay. So all those in favor of all items read except for number two indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed name? No? Any abstentions? Okay, those are all passed. And then could you just go ahead and read number two again?
Item number two, purchase from Contract Design Associates Spokane of desks and cubicle walls for the Community and Economic Development Division, $186,244.13.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Council President, can I comment on this one real quick?
Oh, you can.
Sorry. So this one, obviously I'm the sponsor there. This is something from our division. It was built into their budget. They had budgeted this through for the, for over three years, and so this is not new spending. This is something that was within the budget that we, that we approved, so.
Councilmember Cathcart.
And, and no disagreement, but I just think at a time when we don't know how we're gonna fund a lot of things, this could offset $200,000 from another big priority area. And so I think that, that's why I'm opposed to it.
All right. Any other discussion? Councilmember Wilkerson.
Just a quick way in, it is actually building capacity for that department as they're hiring new staff, so they do need the amenities to do their job.
Okay.
Well, I guess I would just argue there's lots of desks and tables and ways that we can make that work without spending $200,000.
Okay. All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? No.
No.
Any abstentions? All right. That is passed as well. That gets us to special budget ordinances. We have one, we have four people signed up. Go ahead and read that.
Ordinance C 36393, amending ordinance number C 36345, passed by the City Council December 12, 2022, entitled an ordinance adopting the annual budget of the city of Spokane for 2023, making appropriations to various funds of the city of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2023, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage, and declaring an emergency and appropriating funds in. Ordinance C 30, or excuse me, Real Estate Excise Tax Fund, number one, increase appropriation by $4,700,000. A of the increased appropriation, $4,700,000, is provided solely as an operating transfer out to the miscellaneous community development grants fund. And miscellaneous community development grants fund, number one, increase revenue by $4,700,000. A of the increased revenue, $4,700,000, is provided solely as an operating transfer in. From the Real Estate Excise Tax Fund, number two, increase appropriation by $4,700,000. A of the increased appropriation, $4,700,000, is provided solely for operational expenditures at track. This action arises from the need to increase funding to support operations at track.
And before we have testimony, just a quick tee-up. So in 2021, the legislature made a provision to deal with two trends. One, the increasing real estate prices that was giving more money to our Real Estate Excise Tax Fund, and the need for more money for homeless sheltering. And they said temporarily through the end of 2023, you could use those excess funds to pay for shelter. That ends in 2023. Fortunately, the legislature approved a lot more money for sheltering and starting in 2024. So this is intended to use these funds for the track shelter for the rest of the year if we need them. And with that, we've got four people. Justice Forall, Zach McGuckin, Catherine Corrick, and Justin Heller. We'll start with Justice. Welcome to City Council. You have up to three minutes.
Hello, City Council. I'm Justice Forall, Spokane resident. I would like to first talk about Camp Hope and its closure. I want to thank Julie Garcia and Jules Helping Hands for the amazing work that they did to get people housed. I can only imagine what $4.7 million would do to entity like Jules Helping Hands instead of putting more and more money towards the track shelter. The track shelter, from what I'm aware, and this is from testimonies that I get, is not safe. It is not a shelter that a lot of people like going to because there's not any upward mobility. And in order to get out of houselessness, you need upward mobility. Right now, the track shelter is a warehouse in the middle of nowhere. It is very hard to get there, it's very hard to get back, if you need to get back to the track shelter, meaning that, you know, people are not really gonna use it. It is getting hotter this summer, as it does every summer, and soon there's no solutions currently that I'm aware of that City Council is proposing to affect the heat waves that Spokane has every year. $4.7 million is a lot of money. Once again, we need receipts of what goes on in the track shelter, including how participants feel about the track shelter. How do people who have lived experience at the track shelter feel about these improvements? Is this money being used well? You should ask the people there. Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming down. And Zach McGuckin, and after Zach, Catherine Corrick, and then Justin Heller. Welcome, you have up to three minutes.
Hello, my name is Zachary McGuckin, and I'm a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. I'm not opposed to giving money to homeless services, obviously. However, we need to actually seriously think about what works and what doesn't. And so far, the track shelter, or the Trent Shelter, has proven to be a failing project. We need to, whatever money goes into that project, we need to know exactly where it's going and how it is actually improving it. The facility is used by the track shelter is owned by the, a personal friend of the mayor's, and so they're consistently profiting off of all the money that the city is putting into this project. So we have to ask hard questions. Is this money really being spent there in order to help unhoused people, or is it being spent there in order to increase the pockets of some rich Spokaneites? So any money that goes into the track shelter needs to be thoroughly vetted, and it needs to be shown to the public how that money's being spent, and the public and the recipients at the track shelter need a say in where the funding goes. The lack of transparency is frightening and disgusting. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Catherine Corrick, you have up to three minutes.
Good evening, President Beggs and City Council members. My name is Catherine Corrick. I am a licensed mental health counselor, a community volunteer, and an advocate per persons experiencing homelessness. I have watched you try to put a patchwork of money together to try to fund what has turned out to be an exorbitant amount of money to run the track shelter. However, although the previous speakers had some merit, I have personally spent some time out there volunteering, spoken to a number of guests out there and at Canon who had previously resided at the track shelter, and to some of the staff out at the track shelter. And it is my belief that despite a rocky start, that the operator is doing a good job of running what is intended to run, which is an operation for a huge amount of people and their pets. Could it be better? Of course it could, and they know that themselves. But there's possibilities for where you could take this money from. I think this is good a pot as any, and to my mind, this money needs to go to the guests at the track shelter. And I think we need to keep that in mind. This needs to help them. If we want to provide more services to get them out of homelessness, then we need to authorize money for more services. The operator does not have funds for the actual services needed to get folks out of homelessness. That was not appropriate, appropriated, and the service provider there did not get funds for all of the folks that are there. So that's, therein lies the deficits out there. And I do support this ordinance, and I urge you to pass it. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Justin Heller. Welcome, you have up to three minutes.
I'm Justin Heller, and I live in District 1. I'm very frustrated with the state of affairs, as always. What, what do you guys do with the money you steal from us? That's, that's always the question. What do you guys do with the money? Is there any metric dollar per person housed, or person relocated, or person absolved of homelessness? Is there, is there any metric that you can say, "We're winning on this. We have actually gotten this person a job, gotten this person out of this situation, gotten this person better." There's, I don't see any metric for the, for the dollars spent, and it just seems like the homeless industrial complex grows and grows and grows, and you keep throwing more money at a problem that isn't being solved. It just gets shuffled and moved, and now you have it on Fish Lake Trail. If you have, actually ever ridden, ridden your bike on Fish Lake Trail, you'd see the camps and more homeless there. It's just very frustrating just to see how you, you don't, there's no progress reports, there's no metric, there's no solutions, just, "Oh, we're gonna shuffle them over here, we're gonna shuffle them over here." What, what good does that do anyone if you shuffle, keep shuffling people around? Other than maybe if you keep shuffling people around, they'll, they'll find it a little harder to be homeless in Spokane, but they might actually move. But less money, less resources, less industrial complex funding towards the homeless will actually make people leave. Look at all the other failed projects like Chicago, Seattle, New York, Los Angeles, I think I said that again, San Diego. All these failed projects, they don't work. They don't work. You have urine and feces and needles everywhere. Everywhere you go, there's urine and feces and needles. And if that's okay with you, continue to, to have these shelters, because everywhere around it promotes more crime, more filth, more decay. Look downtown. Starbucks closed, Einstein Bagels closed. Are you okay with that? Are you okay with all these businesses walking away because they can't have a decent customer base coming in and feel safe? Even, even the cleaners, they have a fence now. There's a fence where my car got firebombed. There's fences everywhere where there didn't used to be fences because people are afraid, people are scared. You know, what you're doing is not working. And last week, I was on the phone for an hour and a half, and I got sidestepped yet again. Yeah, yeah, look at the clock, don't look, listen to me. Look at the clock, don't listen to me. That's typical Brian Beggs. And I, I, I fear going to Superior Court because I know you're not impartial. You're not impartial in District 1.
Please stop yelling.
And not impartial. Who said that?
I did. Please stop yelling.
Oh, I can be louder.
I don't want you to yell.
This is my civil voice. I have the right to disagree with you.
Mr. Heller, your time's up.
I have a right to disagree with you. It's called freedom of speech.
Time's up, Mr. Heller.
It's called freedom of speech. Look it up, you're a lawyer, you might know about it.
All right. Any council commentary on this special budget ordinance? Councilmember Stratton.
So I don't know about anybody else, but I received the memo from our Director of Utilities this afternoon about four o'clock. I don't know if everybody read it or not. And I guess what I'm wondering is just to have a quick conversation if, so, two things, they're respectfully asking us to revert to the 3.9 million because that extra money is what they use for grant matches, street maintenance, and capital projects. So I'm just asking if anybody is interested in either deferring this?
I had a chat with Ms. Fies after, after that, and explained to her that the money is not, is still available. We're, we're reversing the order of it, but the money that we're not spending on it is still available as ARPA money for those. It's just, creates more flexibility for the finance department. So if they actually had the need for that money, they could still get it.
They would get it through ARPA, and is that money gonna stay there and not?
Yeah, that, that money's getting parked for 2024.
It will be the same amount that they've been counting on for these maintenance projects?
If they need to, I mean, they'd have to talk to us, but yeah.
What, I guess what, what's the pot that they would draw from then?
Well, what, the, we already set aside 3.4 million or something like that for homelessness, and we're basically saying we're not spending that right now.
Okay.
We're putting that off to the side. We're gonna spend the REIT, because we can only spend that REIT this year. And then if we want to make different decisions, that money doesn't have to go to homeless, it could go back to the REIT. And I explained that to her. She said she felt better, shouldn't love it, but she felt better.
Well, I guess that, that actually adds to my sustainability concerns, because then that's money that we were expecting they would rely upon for one-time funding in '24 just to keep this thing afloat. And now if we're gonna dig into that at, to the tune of potentially a million dollars, that's even less sustainability that, that exists around this project. So that, I guess, makes, makes me even more concerned, I guess.
Just my, my point is that it's not, what we're doing tonight is not irreversible for them. That decision is still there. Councilmember Bingle.
That's true. In theory, it's not irreversible, but the very likely outcome is that this money is gone from that program, and it's likely not coming back from ARPA. That's the most likely scenario in my mind. And I would also like to have more discussion around this. I talked to the administration when they first proposed the 3.9 and said I didn't like it, we need to find something else. I understand that there's not really something else, and so the trouble is, is that it's either funding from here or funding from ARPA, and then we're in a situation next year where we don't have ARPA, and we could have used the REIT this year, and that's why we're proposing REIT this year. But this, in reality, in my mind, this is $5 million gone from the, from the REIT fund that we do use for, for matching for projects. But the question is, again, in all reality, to the sustainability question, there is no sustainable funding for homelessness. There just isn't. And so every single year it's a patchwork, the legislature gives us the ability to take from something, and I, when it was 3.9, I didn't like it. When it's 4.7, I like it even less. I would, I would prefer if we had, you know, two weeks, and I hate to keep piling more on June 26th, because I know that we've got a, a huge meeting that day. But I would also like some more time on this. The trouble is, is that if you talk to our budget folks, there's just not another pot of money.
The other, the other trouble is that they need this allocation in order to actually get into Contract of Salvation Army. That's the time pressure.
Right.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, and I, I would love a deferral too, if for no other reason, then we could actually have the time to discuss this along with the many other incoming expenses, and to do so holistically at one time. We have yet to truly, truly do that. We have a number of study sessions throughout June that's leading us to an SBO, and I would much prefer to take care of this at that point in time when we can actually balance this with all of the other city priorities and know that what the decision we are making isn't gonna have a massive unintended consequence, putting aside the, just the lack of sustainability for this entire program.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Councilmember Cathcart's right, we've never got the total package on this, but we are providing a service. Our citizens have said they don't want homeless people on the street. They want to provide a place for them to be. It is expensive going for it because we have to stand it up basically on the fly, because we're not in the business of homelessness, we've never been good at it. We've only had pass-through dollars. Is the track the best thing? In hindsight, we could have done something different, but currently, there are no other options out there to house our unhoused and homeless people. So we've closed the track down, and those average daily census has been about 300 people every day. Where will they go? They will go to the various neighborhoods, and then we will hear again from neighbors that homeless people are in our neighborhoods, or they're on the Fish Lake Trail, or they're down by the river. And it's just a problem that has been, you know, in a cycle for us. So I support this 4.4.7 million dollars out of the REITs to fund track, we gotta pay them, because there's nobody else currently. And I support the increased amount so we can stabilize their budget as we try to stabilize ours as we go forward, because we can discuss this all we want, but there's no other options for the money. We can defer it all we want, but this is the only pot of money that's available to fund the track shelter at this time. So I will be in support of this.
Councilmember Stratton.
I will just close by, I worry that leadership will, will be different when, you know, a few months out, if that money's gonna be available or not. I have a huge amount of respect for the Director of Utilities, Marlene Fies, and I think she's worked really, really hard to make ends meet and to, to serve our neighborhoods and the city. So I know we're gonna, this will be used for homelessness, but then the, the individuals, individuals that are living in neighborhoods that need street maintenance and the employees that are writing grants that need grant matches, you know, there's no win here. But I, I just, I feel badly that this was late in coming. I don't know if Marlene was involved in these discussions in the beginning, if, if she was at the table, but it just feels to me like if, if there's any opportunity for us to spend an hour with her and talking about what we might be able to do here, it, it might be worth it. That's just my opinion.
I was just gonna add, according to our budget director, so these are REIT 1 funds.
And 2.
REIT 2 has a very large surplus and can be used to backfill REIT 1, according to our budget director. So this, this recommendation is from our budget director, as far as moving the money around from ARPA and REIT- from ARPA and REIT and that, so that is, but I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just giving you extra information, because we asked, some of us asked him the same question.
Yeah.
I'll go to Councilmember Sipone.
First, I have a question, then comment. I know that we've had a lot of discussion about the indirect costs at Salvation Army.
Yeah.
If we used ARPA money first on track, that'd be federal dollars, so would that have an impact on the indirect costs instead of using local REIT dollars?
Potentially. That's one argument, that if you use ARPA dollars, you have to pay the higher indirect. I don't, no one's ever really explained that to me, but yeah, that is one argument.
You would pay lower indirect, right?
If you use ARPA, you would pay higher indirect.
I thought the federal.
Federal, makes it higher.
Oh, okay.
That's their argument. They're saying, use the local dollars, you can pay lower.
Second, I also talked to our Budget Director, and to me, I think this just comes down to priorities, and that's the issue of, like, what are our priorities, the top priorities? Do we hear from people in the community, of us on council, and again and again, like, the number one top priority is always homelessness, right? And like, we all want the other things in our neighborhood, and we need those things, but if we're not addressing that top priority first and foremost, then those other things, people are still gonna complain about the number one problem, and the other things do. So, I think we have to, I don't, and have not heard of another option going forward, and I agree, more time would be great, but we have been talking about this for a long time. We've asked for over a year for the full costs, and we haven't gotten it, so I don't expect anything to change in two weeks.
All right. Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, I mean, really good points made, right? You know, Councilmember Sipone, absolutely, public safety and homelessness is the number one thing that, you know, or those are the top two things I hear all the time. And just wanna say thank you to Councilwoman Wilkerson for all the time in her office today, as we chatted through this issue, and Matt Boston for that. Even in this moment, I honestly don't know how I'm gonna vote yet, because again, it is something that we need to do. I worry that that fund is not gonna be replenished in the way that others think it will, but yeah.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you, just a brief input to Councilmember Stratton's comment about Marlene Feist, who is absolutely amazing. I think the frustration has been for us, is we have asked the administration where they would like the money to come from. So, we were thinking that in the cabinet level, they were discussing what would be the best option for them. So, out of the cabinet, I'm a little frustrated that their department heads are kinda at odds of how to fund some of this, and we just got this kinda at the last minute, so that's a little challenging for me. It's like, mm, we've been asking you to come to the table for weeks to advise us what you would recommend, and truly, they had no recommendation.
Yeah.
They absolutely had no recommendation, and this is what our Finance and Budget Director came up with, is what you see before us tonight.
And I get that, it just feels like, once again, we're, staff is getting stuck in the middle.
Yeah.
And that just, to me, is something that we should avoid at all costs. But I do understand, and I understand the lack of leadership and motivation from the administration to sit down and get this worked out long before, you know, the last hour before a council meeting starts. But I just worry that the employees and the experts that are depending on this, it just feels like we're creating a lot of stress for them.
Councilmember Bingle.
Now, I'm not so sure that administration didn't present us with anything, they presented us with the REIT option months ago, right? It was just 3.9 as opposed to 4.7. And so, I do remember this coming from administration. Now, it going up to 4.7 million was the result of our Budget Director's input.
No, but we had a meeting with the administration and came up with this number, with our Budget Committee and them, that was the agreement. We, at the table, we had that, so it wasn't, it wasn't us unilaterally doing it, the group decision. But it wasn't the entire cabinet, it was only some of them.
We'll stop the entire cabinet.
I don't see you raising your hand, Councilmember Canaire, so, but I just wanted to give you a chance, if you wanted to weigh in.
She's gotta have something to say.
Everything's been said, so, thank you.
Okay. All right. All right, is there any other comments? If not, prepare to vote.
Gosh, I'm not prepared for any.
Councilmember Canaire, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay. All right. That passes, five to two. I'm going to, we have a few hearings, I'm gonna go to those hearings. Those all have staff members here to shepherd those through. The first hearing is hearing number one.
H1, Hearing on Resolution 2023-44, Adopting the 2024-2029 Six-Year Comprehensive Street Program, Various Neighborhoods.
Welcome, Mr. Picasso.
Good evening. Good evening, City Council, again, presenting, excuse me, jumped ahead there, presenting on our annual update to our six-year street comprehensive program, in this case for the 2024, the 2029 time period, requested action tonight as City Council adoption of that program. This just quickly summarizes our various official touchpoints with Plan Commission, PCTS, some study sessions with council, leading to this hearing today on June 12th. Again, a summary, or a kind of overview, always kind of lead our discussions with, as it relates to our annual budget update, is the fact that our six-year street program is really the mechanism where we implement the goals and policies of Chapter 4, the transportation element of our comprehensive plan. Once projects are included in our program, we seek funding and then move forward with the design and construction. Unique to the streets program is the fact that state law requires that we have an adopted program by July 1st of each year, which is why it's at a sequence or ahead of our citywide capital improvement program that comes before you later in the year. Just a quick summary of the projects that have been completed or becoming out of our, will be coming out of the program, couple of them were completed in 2022, Hatch and 44th at the top, the remainder of the projects are projects that are under construction as we speak, or will be here shortly, and should be complete this year, and thus, don't need to carry forward into 2024. Just by way, a summary, 12 new projects going into the program, seven of those are a result of successful grant awards, of those, seven grants, five of them are ped and bike safety focused. Couple pages here listing those projects, and I'll summarize each of those individually. This is just the map, showing the location of those various new projects going into the program. And then, getting into each of them individually, first, Leita Bridge, adding that to the program, first order of work is to commence some planning efforts to update some past planning studies, put ourselves in position and be prepared to seek a couple of different grant opportunities coming up over the next couple of years. Again, it's gonna be a mega project, looking at 50 to 60 million dollar project, just to kind of put it in perspective, gonna be very challenging to fund this, so we need to kind of start that effort of seeking grant funds. Next project is the Chestnut Street Bridge scour damage repair. This project is entering the program, result of a successful grant award last year. This project will address ongoing erosion and scour damage around the existing Chestnut Street Bridge, reconstructing and repairing the stream bank around the bridge piers, and protecting that bridge from future and ongoing damage. Next project is the Arterial Ped Hybrid Beacons Project. This was also a successful grant award this last year, just under $2 million through the Federal Highway Safety Improvement Program, Grant Program. This project will install four pedestrian hybrid beacons and associated ped crossing improvements at four different locations spread around the city. Next project is the Maxwell Ped Bike Safety Project. This is along Maxwell in the West Central Neighborhood, just west of Cannon Park at Pettit, continuing east of the Maple Ash, Maple Ash Couplet. The project will install striped and protected bike lanes, as well as an enhanced ped crossing at Elm Street, as well as some sidewalk infill. Little under $2 million, about $1.5 million in grant funds through the state's Ped Bike Safety Program. Next project, Lincoln Street, also through, excuse me, a successful grant award through the Ped Bike Safety Program. Larger project, closer to $4 million. This project will also install protected and striped bike lanes along Lincoln Street from the north side of the river, north past Boone, where Lincoln turns into Post Street, just, and will end just short of Maxwell. Project as well as bike and bike lane and protected bike lane improvements, there will also be some sidewalk improvements and traffic signal replacement as part of this project. Will also, a package with this work, planned street maintenance work for grind and overlay through this area as well. Next project is the Stevens Elementary Safe Routes to School project, this was also a recent grant award. This project installs a variety of improvements, including some sidewalk infill, but the highlights are pedestrian hybrid beacon crossing of Mission Avenue, as well as an RRFB crossing of Napa Street in the vicinity of the school. About 1.4 million total project costs, and again, this is through the Safe Routes to School Program at the state level. Another project through that Safe Routes to School Program is the Scott Elementary Project. This project is primarily installing sidewalk infill along Hartson and Rebecca Streets, along the walk routes to Scott Elementary School. Next project is Riverside Avenue, here to Monroe. This is really driven by planned utility improvement projects. We have some needed and upcoming stormwater and wastewater improvements along Riverside Avenue that will impact much of the street. What we're doing here with the street project is bringing additional dollars into the project to do a full reconstruction of that, of the pavement from curb to curb, but we'll also replace curb ramps, address any sidewalk problems that are out there today, and doing that as part of that utility project. You see the date there, 2028, this is not a project we'll be starting planning or designing on in the next couple of years, it's out there in the latter years of our six-year program. Next project, Maple Walnut Grind and Overlay, this is a traditional maintenance project, but we secured a grant through the state's Transportation Improvement Board. The project's located along the Maple Walnut Couplet, that work will occur from the bridge north, I'm sorry, from the freeway north to the bridge. About $1.5 million, just under a million dollars in grant funding for that project, hoping to get that out to construction in 2024, might be 2025. Next project is a traffic impact fee funded project for the Thorpe Tunnels. This will allow us to get into the preliminary engineering work, advance the design effort for that project, look at what it's really gonna take, given the complexity of new tunnels or modifying those tunnels, or parallel tunnels, we really need a better handle on what that will take from a design and construction perspective, put a better price tag on and identify the issues. So, this project will allow us to get into that kind of early preliminary engineering work. Next project is also impact fee project, up in the northwest portion of the city, at the Assembly Francis Nine Mile intersection. Project will install a roundabout to address both capacity and safety issues at that location. And the final project is the Monroe Street Bridge Suicide Prevention Study. This project will allow us to move forward with some study and planning efforts to look at options for the bridge. And then, just by way, some project updates. This list here is a partial list, kind of the highlights of projects that'll be moving forward. In general, it's because of recent successful grant awards. These projects were already in the program, so they're not new projects per se, but as a result of recent grant awards, they'll be able to advance generally to construction. Spokane Falls Boulevard is only partially funded, but the rest of these projects are now all fully funded for construction, so we'll be able to advance those into final design in '23 and '24. And this is just a quick map, kind of highlighting the location of those particular projects. Then, just summarizing kind of on the financial side, again, 10 projects coming out of the program, 12 new ones, completed and removed projects, roughly $20 million, the value of the new projects going in, roughly $38 million. And then, finally, just a reminder that the entirety of the program has been available online for about a month now, and these links will take you directly to that document if you wanna dive into the details, if you will. And with that, back to Council President with requested action.
Councilwoman Wilkerson.
Kevin, I'm gonna ask you just to go back to the slides where it shows the projects that were funded by SRTC. I just really wanna highlight that that is money that's in collaboration with the city.
Like these projects advancing as an example?
Yeah, these projects that are being paid.
Yep.
So, all those that have SRTC is money that's coming through the transportation, the MPs, with the city, so that's a significant amount, and thank you to your department and SRTC for looking at that, and how those projects scored actually to get that funding going forward. That's a heavy lift off of our shoulders to fund those projects.
Speaking of funding, I know this isn't what you're here to talk about, but do you have any thoughts on the vote with REIT dollars? And how that impacts our ability to fund any of those projects?
No, I think I would just defer to Marlene Feist's letter, I think that kind of summarizes our position.
Okay.
Clearly a veteran.
Yeah.
Good job. Any other? Oh, we have comments? No, we don't have comments on this one, okay.
We saw the amendment, did we not add Inland Empire Way?
We did add that, that's in it now.
Yep, yep, and that project's already in the program, it was just some requested edits, which are taken no exception to, so.
Your hand up, Councilmember, okay. Councilmember Canaire, any comments?
No, just wanna make sure that the Inland Empire Way, Way rebuild is in this.
It's in there. He confirmed that it's in there.
And we got assurance, yeah, and we got assurance from folks at WashDOT that they could help us with identifying funding.
Yeah, and I can just add as well, we've already released the RFQ, I think we received proposals today, so we'll be evaluating those proposals and moving into the study, you know, here later this summer, so.
Good news. All right, with that, prepare to vote. How do you vote, Councilmember Canaire?
Aye.
Okay. All right, that's unanimous, and that brings us to hearing number two. Thank you, Mr. Picasso.
Final reading ordinance C 36388, extending and renewing ordinance C 36232 as amended by ordinance number C 36296, and interim zoning ordinance codified in Chapter 17C.400 SMC, establishing interim zoning regulations concerning permitting and encouraging the construction of low intensity residential buildings in residential zoning districts and multiple family housing in center and corridor zoning districts.
Good evening, Council President.
Mr. Chubot, welcome.
How's it going? I challenge myself, someday I will write an agenda preface that trips her up, but she's amazing, she gets through it every time, so, thank you, Terry, I appreciate it. Tonight's item is essentially a one-shot thing, it is an extension of the existing Boca interim ordinance. This isn't any changes to the program, this isn't any solutions for the long term, that's being developed under the separate program, Building Opportunity for Housing. This is simply an extension to make sure that we have a high level of certainty and understanding as we complete the work to replace Boca. This extension, if approved, would continue Boca from its current expiration date of July 18th, would push it out five months to December 18th. And that is it, for me, anyway.
Any questions for Mr. Chubot?
No.
We're gonna, we have some community testimony, actually.
Excellent.
All right, you can sit down, and
Thank you.
I don't know that we'll need your services, but, so we have four people signed up, Justice for All, Zach McGuckin, Dave Billslan, and Michelle Pappas.
When it comes down to this ordinance, we need to pay attention to those who are displaced from their homes. Right now, rent again is increasing for a lot of people. I've heard testimonies from people where it's upwards of $500 in one apartment, and causing mass, basically eviction from all of those families in that apartment. Although it's great to establish more housing for people, a lot of the times, the development and the people that we currently serve are not the people who are currently in Spokane, but a lot of people who come from out of state or other cities, because gentrification doesn't really work for the people who are currently living there. Thank you so much.
All right. Zach, still here he comes?
That's not Zach.
It is, yeah.
That's Zach?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, there are two Zacks. I thought we were talking about the other Zach.
Oh.
All right, but we got, you're the right one. Welcome. You've got up to three minutes.
Yeah, my apologies for being back there, but yeah, I just want to say that I also think that it's very important to center people struggling with displacement. We've had some of the statistics written out or read out, but 50% of Spokane are renters and 50% of renters are rent burdened, and so we really need to be looking at solutions for those people. And yeah, that's it. I see the rest of my time.
All right. Thank you. Dave? Billslund, you still here?
It looks like he's coming down.
He likes the entrance. Okay.
Come on down, Dave.
Dave?
Is this still BOKA?
Hearing number two, yep, BOKA.
Okay, I just didn't know which one it is, because you guys don't follow the, it's hard to follow. You need to put a reader up here that announces what you're working on at the moment so that we can all stay together on the same page, because this could have been a lot simpler. I had my testimony all planned out, because I just love this. This is great. One word, yes. And if you'd stayed in order on this, I could have. Saved you a lot of time.
All right, well, thank you. Michelle? Pappas? Oh, she's online, all right. On virtual or phone? All right. Michelle, we're adding you to the panel. We see your name.
Hello, council members. Michelle Pappas, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I would implore you all to use this extension to ensure that this zoning change is paired with anti-displacement and anti-gentrification strategies, especially proactive rentalist funding, inclusionary zoning, to name a few. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All right, that's the end of community testimony. Any council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, well, this is a policy I think is the right choice. You know, it really does improve affordability, I believe, in our community long-term, as well as access to homeownership, and so I'm glad that we adopted this on a temporary basis and that we are collecting all kinds of feedback, and I think we'll have a pretty good product to vote on at the end of the year to make this permanent. So I am more than happy to support this tonight.
All right. Any other comments? Councilmember Wilkerson? I will echo that, and I look forward to the report to really help us make better decisions. I certainly hear about displacement, but with the information to make sure our policies are the most effective for housing growth, which is needed, that will help with that displacement, it will help with renters as we're able to build more units online, and it's just a linchpin of how we go forward in our policymaking. Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, totally agree. I think this policy has been a success, and again, this is an example of where Spokane leads, the state follows. And so I'm really proud of this one. I think we've done a good job. In the Northeast, there's a project that's happening on Lyons that does, you know, there are a couple of homes that are on there, but it's going to lead to 48 units by those not being there anymore, which does help to increase our housing stock quite a bit. And this is one of the areas where there is genuine collaboration and cooperation between all of council and council administration, and so just for me, to all of you, I appreciate all of your hard work on housing, because I think we're doing some good stuff, and I think the city's on a better track because of it, so good job.
Amen.
And I will just add that I'm super excited how the council has moved over the last few years to embrace this and work with our developer community, both profit and nonprofit and market and subsidized, to do that. My sense, like I think most of us here, is adding up to four units on a parcel just helps for the most part. I don't think we have developed the anti-displacement strategies yet that we need, and I think we need to really dig deeper on that. I don't think that's an impediment to this one. I think the next level of upzoning, where you get multiple stories, and hopefully now that we can do condos and things like that, I really have been proposing in the transit-oriented development world that we do a baseline density, and then we give bonus densities when developers will sell the city at cost with a development fee, one or two units for each parcel, and that should more than prevent displacement, and then we could sell those to people with some subsidized down payment and things like that, and keep them permanently affordable, and thus, all those people who live in those neighborhoods could stay, and we could have way more people. So I'm really encouraging people anytime I have an opportunity to explore that, because I think that's really going to be the only effective anti-displacement strategy. But with that, prepare to vote.
And I forgot to ask you, councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
All right, seven to zero. Thanks. That brings us to hearing number three.
H3 final reading ordinance C 36390 relating to the building code, amending Spokane Municipal Code Section 17G.010.030, expiration of building permits.
All right. Spencer Gardner, Director of Planning.
I stayed late so Tammy could go home. This is pretty simple. It's just extending the time during which a building permit is active or valid. We've been hearing feedback from permit applicants who, you know, with supply chain challenges and things like that that arose during COVID and continue, honestly, now, that a little bit more time is needed on some of these building permit projects, so it just extends that timeframe. We generally have been giving extensions anyway. This way, we don't have to spend a lot of staff time processing those extensions. We're just kind of granting them automatically.
All right. There are a couple of community members who want to testify. Justice for All and Zach McGuckin.
I see this once again as a need to increase the staffing in Spokane rather than extend the permit time. If we increase the staffing, then this would not be an issue, and we can continue to remain on the yearly schedule, just like for most things, registering yearly is very common. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, similarly, I implore you all to increase staffing so that we can get the building permits checked in the time limits we currently have, instead of extending those time limits. I think it's important that we consider the quality of the buildings we're in to ensure people's safety, and so for me, that should be a very, or in my perspective, that should be a very high priority. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That's the end of community comment. Any council commentary? All right, prepare to vote. Councilmember Kinnear, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven to zero. All right, we are back to emergency ordinances. For those keeping track, '94, '96 have been, are on first reading tonight, and also to June 26th, but they are no longer emergency ordinances, but. Go ahead, Ms. Hister.
Ordinance C 36395 relating to Spokane Municipal Court and amending Section 05A.01.010, 05A.09.010, and 05A.18.020 of the Spokane Municipal Code and declaring an emergency.
All right, and we have several people who want to testify on this. At its core, this adds a, two therapeutic courts to our municipal court system. One, Domestic Violence Intervention Treatment Court, which we just started with money from the state and Congress, and then it also provides for a drug court as an alternative to traditional municipal court. It has not been set up yet, but it authorizes them to do it.
But we have Justice for All, and then Megra Flatman, she's still on the line, and then Scott Ward.
Excuse me, Council President. Did you wish to amend this one before people start speaking on it?
You are correct. Thank you for reminding me. We had some small technical amendments on changing the name of the National Association that approved them and some other language that was circulated. Is there a motion to substitute? Second. Okay, any discussion? Are those in favor? Yeah.
Do we just want to tell them what that change is real quick, just so they can? Yeah, it's just the name, but just.
It's just the name, which I don't have in front of me, and then.
Actually, it just talks about industry.
And then for the drug court, it says it meets industry standards.
Industry standards, right. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor of substitution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? All right, substitution. Mr. Fraw. Apologies, thank you. You have up to three minutes.
Hi, my name is Justice for All. I'm a Spokane city resident. I just think metrics are very important as we continue to see alternatives to jail, and there isn't enough right now, services when it comes down to drug treatment, when it comes to detox centers and things that actually do address mental health issues. We definitely need to be funding more of those, and it is sad that we have to go through the court system to find treatment for a lot of people, but if we are going to go through the court system, it's important that we do track a lot of the data that comes through there. I would also like to mention there is an email from the Spokane, downtown Spokane Police Precinct to all of the precinct officers, saying that they should, they are considered activists, not refer them to community court, but to prosecute them to the fullest extent of the law, and that the prosecutor is also on board with this. This email came out, I don't have it on me, and I wish I brought it with me a couple of years ago, and is very problematic, because it shows that when it comes down to unhoused individuals, at least, or being activists for their rights, that they should no longer be referred to community court, but again, use the full force of the law against somebody who has very little protections to begin with. Thank you so much. I'm glad that something like this is being passed, and please hear me that there's, or y'all know, there's not enough. There's definitely not enough treatment, and we continue to criminalize and really make it impossible to be unhoused in Spokane, because one of the new ordinances that is coming up in this upcoming election that the people will be voting on actually covers 40% of the map, and that is the Keep Children Safe ordinance, and that's not including things that are not even accessible by land, like the rivers and the other things where people just can't be, and so 40% of a map is a lot of space, and also, I'm wondering, how the heck is the city going to put up enough signs to know whether or not you're allowed to be anywhere in Spokane? Thank you.
And is Megra on the line? All right, if you want to hit star three, Megra, you can start testifying. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you. Alternatives to jail have been proven to benefit society. The Bureau of Justice Assistance 2011 study documented 20 years of data proving drug court reduces recidivism by 40%. Spokane law professor and ACLU Strategy Director Jamie Hawk also argues for non-jail solutions, stating this pretrial detention is the pipeline to mass incarceration. The National Institute of Justice in 2020 stated that programs designed to improve, quote, "behaviors, skills, mental health, social functioning, and access to education and employment reduce recidivism among adults." Spokane County Prosecutor Larry Haskell has been on record multiple times agreeing with the benefit of therapeutic alternatives. However, since he took office in 2015, referrals to Spokane's beneficial jail alternatives have dropped by over half. Shockingly, drug court today is still operating at less than half the capacity it did before Haskell took office. Dr. Sandra Altshuler, Spokane Clinical Social Worker Specialist, wrote to the Spokesman Review in 2020 about the shocking drop in referrals she personally witnessed. Quote, "When Larry assumed office, referrals to the therapeutic courts dropped significantly, and more insidiously, virtually no people of color were referred. When inquiries were made about this, his office refused to send needed information about their referrals while claiming, 'We don't turn anyone down.' Many attorneys in Larry's office countered that claim by noting that they and their colleagues would receive reprimands for submitting referrals to our court. I would like to read from an email that downtown precincts captain David Stingley wrote to all Spokane's downtown precinct officers about the incident Justice was just talking about. In fact, quote, 'In fact, city attorney Mike Ormsby pulled cases related to this incident from community court and had them assigned to municipal court. Going forward, if you charge these two individuals or others engaging in similar conduct with misdemeanors, please cite them to municipal court rather than community court. We will be monitoring the outcome of these cases so we are aware of how they are resolved in the court system.'" Spokane needs concrete data about who is being referred to what court. Restricting therapeutic alternatives to select Spokaneites, namely Spokane's people of color, is abhorrent, unjust, and sadly systemic. There is a reason that Larry Haskell has refused to allow Spokane's prosecuting office to release the data requested to cover up systemic racial injustice. Spokane desperately needs this data to be public knowledge and to correct this continued injustice. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing, Megra. And next is Scott Ward, followed by Zach McGuckin, and then Alexis Tenaskit.
Well, I can't say it too much better than that. I think, again, yeah, all these alternatives are a really positive thing, you know, people who are suffering with addiction should not be thrown into jail. They should be given help and therapy. And, you know, unfortunately, though, we do exist in this court system that operates on a classist and white supremacist basis, and so, you know, again, we're looking at, we're hearing exactly the disparities that are going on here. So all people should have access to these alternatives, not just, you know, the people who are favored by, you know, the certain people within, you know, the prosecutor's office, or, you know, people within the SPD or things like that. So, yeah, it's really important we get the data. As Justice was talking about, we need data on who's getting offered these services, across racial lines, who's getting offered this, who's getting offered based on, you know, income and wealth and things like that. So who's getting offered these opportunities and who isn't? Otherwise, we're going to continue to have a system where if you're wealthy, you get rehab, and if you're poor, you go to jail for your addiction issues, and that's just, that's how these issues spiral and how we continue to have deepening of poverty, deepening of trauma, deepening of homelessness and things like that. So let's get to the root of these issues and focus on healing people rather than criminalizing them. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Zach? After Zach, Alexis Tenaskit, and then Crystal Burgett.
Yeah, I feel like most of what there is to say has been said, so I'm not going to belabor the point, but I will just point out an irony in that we were just celebrating Father's Day and recognizing the value of fathers, and how many fathers are taken away from their family every year because of our lack of alternatives for jail? And when we look at whose family units are being destroyed by our criminal justice system, we know it's black families, we know it is poor families, and so we need alternatives because we heard it, fatherlessness is an issue, and, but it's not an issue that exists in a vacuum. It's an issue that exists because of policies and systems we have in place, like our current criminal justice system. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to City Council.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Yes, I agree with the three previous speakers that were before me, and I appreciate that they would put it so eloquently. We do need more services, we need less criminalization. We are standing here, we are living here and depending on this native land and this river, and our native people have been here since time immemorial, and we are disproportionately still separated from our families, from each other by addiction, by the criminalization of addiction, and we have a disproportionate. by the criminalization of addiction, and we have a disproportionate rate of addiction because of the traumas that have been placed on us as we survive this colonized version of living that is here right now with us. And on that note, I would also, this is city business, it's kind of a little bit of a deviation, but I'm having a hard time focusing because I just experienced some, something that was really difficult to hear, and I just wanted to ask that we maintain decorum in this space. I think that it's inappropriate for people to come in and just read straight from the Bible, because I could also bring in my people's coyote stories and read them, but it's not that kind of space.
We're diverging from this topic, though, right now. It's this ordinance in front of us. Your comments, you could bring that to us in open form if you would like. They're legitimate comments, but.
Okay, well, I don't know how else to handle it, because it's something that just happened right here in this space, and?
I'm happy to talk with you afterwards.
Thank you.
Crystal?
I do agree with what everybody has said before me. I did write down we should be funding more treatment, but also remain conscious of the risks involved in entering persons into the system. The people are lacking support and legal assistance, and I think we should consider more resources and care without the ball and chain of an already existing poorly operated court system. We need accountability and transparency to ensure women and people of color are getting equal access to services. I would also like to just point out that language matters, and how you renamed it, I don't, I'm not quite sure it's a good fit.
Thanks for coming down. All right, any council commentary? Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, so this ordinance has undergone a number of versions. Just want to say thank you to Chris for all of his efforts on this and Council President. My understanding is that the portions of it that were objectionable were removed, and with, speaking with the city prosecutor, he seems to be okay with it. Speaking with our legal team, they seem to be okay with it as well, so I intend to support this. I hope it accomplishes the purpose for which it is being set forth, and to everybody speaking on the effects of, you know, criminalizing drug use, you are not alone. That is well heard. One of the reasons why even in our drug ordinance and one of the, in our discussions, felony was not on the table is because, again, it does create significant hardships for people in the future, and so while a necessary tool, not the only tool, not the best tool for everybody, and so I'm hoping that this therapeutic court does a good job for us.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, completely concur with what Councilmember Bingle just said, and I think really this just establishes options for folks who are unfortunately caught up, and that's what we need. If down the line, we need some additional, you know, modifications to this, we can always consider that then, but for now, I think this makes sense to put this, or to pass this and create these options for folks who may need them.
Any other council members? All right, just a shout out to our entire municipal court, and especially all the personnel involved in the therapeutic courts, which crosses prosecutors, judges, public defenders, probation people. When we've studied our therapeutic courts by independent outside academic institutions, they've shown better results as far as reducing criminal behavior in the future and revolving door that often the traditional system. So, it's a, can be a great thing. It costs a little more, and it's more intensive upfront, but kind of you get what you pay for, and it's data informed, and I think Spokane is leading the way on that. So, I'm looking forward to great results on both the DV Court that just started and a future drug court. And with that, prepare to vote. And Councilmember Kinnear, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right, that passes seven zero. All right, we're on to the next.
Ordinance C 36397 relating to Office of Police Ombudsman, Commission amending section 4.32.030 of the Spokane Municipal Code concerning the Office of Police Ombudsman declared an emergency.
All right, we have several people signed up to testify. Want to power through? Does anyone need a five-minute break? Power through. Okay. So, this is one that changed quite a bit today. It went back to really its original form, which was simply removing the language a previous city council put in about limitations on who the ombudsman's office could investigate, and reverts back to the charter language that the community voted in in 2013, which gave the ombuds office quite wide range of power to investigate anything needed to fulfill the OPO duties in the charter, and it does not restrict the mayor in any way from her duties to investigate, or her privilege or duties to investigate department heads. But we've got several people, so first is Justice for All, and then Anwar Peace, and then Megra Flatman.
Hello, my name is Justice for All. I thought I had another letter with me, but I just opened this piece of mail right now sitting down, which you might have seen if you're watching online. This is the letter that you get back after you make a police complaint. I have no idea what complaint this is. This is the complaint I filed with the ombudsman's office. I don't know it's when, not when the officer called me a bigot. I don't know it's when the officers who arrested me wouldn't let me speak to my lawyer until I told them whether or not I was an immigrant. I don't know whether or not it's when officers told me I was not allowed to be in a public space because I was trespassing while I had two dogs with me and obviously was not trespassing in a public space. So, who knows what this letter is about, but apparently, as every letter that I've ever received, they always look exactly the same. That's why I brought this one, and I thought I brought another one, so I could open it up right in front of y'all and show you that this is ridiculous. This is the bare minimum that we're actually asking for with this ordinance. The bare minimum, meaning the oversight of the police department should include the chief of police. That just makes sense to almost everyone. If you watch a video that was released today by the chief of police called Midels Minute, please watch the whole thing. You have the chief of police saying the only person who should have authority over him in investigating him is the same person who gave him the position, and in the same video, he states that he is in political alignment with. That is the definition of terrible oversight. This is the bare minimum that we are asking for here, or you all are asking for. This is, this is not my ordinance, but you're asking that the chief of police be included in the investigative powers of the oversight committee of the police. The answer is yes. Yes, absolutely, yes. Are you kidding me that that's not already the case? And then we have the complaints that we're not getting to. We have the actual people impacted by the fact that these complaints mean nothing, that the harassment that you receive by the police department while you go through the complaint means nothing. Last week, we had Jorella Haynes talking about when you file a complaint with the police department, there are no walls around you. You are in the lobby of City Hall, and that is the truth. There are no walls around you when you're in the lobby of City Hall. I have made complaints in person directly to the ombudsman's office, and while I did that, I'm not going to name the person, but I did have security standing behind me.
We're at three minutes.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Anwar Peace. After Anwar is Megra Flatman and Christine Shuler. Welcome. You have up to three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Anwar Peace, a Spokane resident and a 23-year police accountability expert. Thirteen years ago, I was quoted in the Seattle Times about the Seattle Police Chief, in which I said that chief was only a Band-Aid to the community wounds from that department. Sadly, the Spokane Police Chief isn't a Band-Aid. This chief is more like using some Scotch tape and Kleenex for a large wound. Twenty-seven months ago, I was falsely arrested in jail for jaywalking, and three hours later, at 3:00 a.m., while out of town, the Spokane Police Chief emailed three city council members about my arrest in an effort to discredit me, as well as try to get me removed as a human rights commissioner. As a black community leader, I was more upset and concerned about the chief's behavior and conduct than I was about the arresting officers. So, I was completely dismayed to find out that citizens can't file a complaint on the police chief with the ombudsman's office. Otherwise, 27 months ago, a complaint would have been filed, and accountability on the chief might have happened. And by the way, this isn't the first time the chief has interjected himself to get black community leaders removed from their positions. In fact, two NAACP presidents were removed, and one of them has lost their freedom due to the chief's behavior and conduct. I'm pretty sure those two NAACP presidents would have loved to file a complaint against the chief, but for some reason, that power wasn't given to the police ombudsman. That vice president that lost their freedom, three years they've been sitting in jail awaiting a trial, and they say the chief's involvement in the case is irregular, suspicious, with claims of racial undertones. The other removed NAACP vice president at least got an investigation from city HR, in which that investigation found troubling issues surrounding the chief's behavior and conduct in that situation. In 2021, HR concluded that the chief, quote, "demonstrated a lack of etiquette, situational awareness, emotional intelligence, professional maturity, as well as compromised and damaged the mission, function, reputation, and professionalism of the department." It was then recommended that the city administrator give the chief counseling and coaching regarding, quote, "regarding appropriate executive leadership and behavioral competency and his obligations to uphold the public trust by setting the highest example of behavior and conduct." Finally, let's not forget how we got here in the first place. The chief failed to do a proper investigation into why his department tried to besmirch a black leader sitting on this dais. I wholeheartedly support ordinance C 36397, because Spokane doesn't deserve Scotch tape and Kleenex for a chief anymore. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming down. Megra Flatman, if you're on the phone, hit star three, please. Are you there, Megra?
Yes, thank you.
All right, welcome. You have up to three minutes.
Spokane's first black lawyer, Carl Maxi, said you can't allow the police to investigate themselves. Decades later, you now have the opportunity to make this right, to right this wrong. Black people in Spokane are six times more likely to be arrested than their white counterparts. Even more disturbing, the Vera Institute of Justice's 2019 report detailed Spokane County Jail incarcerates four times as many black people who are mostly awaiting trial for nonviolent crimes, which means they're still presumed innocent. Spokane County Jail incarcerates them for twice as long as their white counterparts. It's past time for oversight of Spokane Police to correct these continued injustices. In 2021, Crem reported that a mapping police violence accountability tool showed that the Spokane Police Department is the third deadliest force in the United States per population. Third deadliest. At the forefront of this systemic police violence are Spokane's people of color. Just last month, video of a Spokane Police Officer violently arresting an unmoving man, putting him in a chokehold, and later violently flipping him face-first onto the sidewalk, and then kneeling on him, was recorded. This video showed violent escalation against an unresisting person of color. It is just one encounter of hundreds that just happens to be independently documented. Spokane needs police oversight. The Office of Police Ombudsman needs to be able to investigate independently. This is absolutely an emergency. In Midels Minute's video released today, he claims he fully cooperated with the OPO's December 2022 investigation. However, in that reference Independent Investigation Closing Report, the OPO wrote on page seven, quote, "No one from Spokane County showed up for an interview, even when repeatedly requested." The report continued that Office of Police Ombudsman has no recourse to compel testimony and nothing further actionable after their investigation was stymied by the very people the OPO is supposed to be investigating. The police cannot investigate themselves. Spokane needs independent investigation of this systemic documented abuse. This is an emergency. Thank you.
Thank you, Megra, and next Christine Shuler, and after Christine, Scott Ward, and then Zach McGuckin. Welcome. You have up to three minutes.
Hello, I'm Christine Shuler. My true name is Seven. Nobody called me Christine until after I was done being a slave for cops. I support this, where, what you're going to vote for, I support you voting for it, but I want to say what you're doing here is very clear. This is a game of good cop, bad cop, trying to blame the current mayor, Nadine Woodward, for doing all this when she had nothing to do with this. The current mayor, Nadine, she didn't write this ordinance. She had nothing to do with the way the ordinance has been, the way it was supposed to be. She had nothing to do with it. It was the city council who makes the laws. The previous city council is the one who changed it, and it's just a political game to blame the mayor, when she's completely innocent. And this ombudsman people, I've had experience with them. They are just as corrupt as the police officers. This city has had very corrupt police officers for decades, before I was even born, before any of you guys were even born. It's not a new thing. It's not an emergency now. This should have been done years ago, and there should be people who, you know, who's going to check or investigate the ombudsman people, because they're just as corrupt. This is just a game you're all playing, and it really, it's disgusting, especially that you're blaming the mayor. The person who was sitting in that chair, the previous city council, they're the ones who did it, not the current mayor. The people who enslaved me for over 47 years, they were all cops. This city has been just filled with corrupt cops for many, many, many decades. It's not a new thing at all. So, don't blame the mayor. Blame the city council, the people who made the laws.
Thanks for coming down, Christine. Scott Ward. And after Scott is Zach McGuckin, and then Crystal.
Thanks. The United States is one of two countries worldwide where it is legal for law enforcement to lie to suspects in the interrogation and investigation process. They can legally lie about having DNA evidence, video evidence, and other evidence to coerce confessions or even false ones. This happens even to underage people, even minors, even teenagers. Law enforcement has also been widely known to plant drugs or guns on citizens after the fact to justify the violence that they used. Law enforcement continues to be untrustworthy in how they conduct investigations of working-class people. Why on earth would we allow them to investigate themselves? The ombudsman needs to have independent authority to fully investigate the SPD chief without a mayoral approval. The mayor should not be able to decide whether the person she appointed gets investigated or not. Thank you.
Thank you. And Zach McGuckin. After Zach is Crystal, and then Alexis. Welcome.
Sorry, one second. In that Midels Minute video he made earlier, Chief Midels stated that if this ordinance was to pass, the chief of police will be opened up to civilian complaints related how to, related to how the budget is operated, deployment of officers, other staffing decisions, and any multitude of other operational decisions a chief may make. I say that should have been the case to begin with. As Brian Beggs said when he introduced this law, the language we're reverting to is the language that was decided upon by- language that was decided upon by the community in 2013. So the masses of people supported this language, and it was the city council that changed it. Why would the city council oppose the language that the masses were supporting? It's been repeatedly affirmed by courts that police do not have to respond to 911 calls. So having complaints about deployment of officers makes sense. Most poor communities, if you call the cops, they will not come. They're not there to serve you. And additionally, we've seen repeatedly that Chief Midol has been communicating and essentially providing private security for downtown business owners. He's a public officer, and the public should have authority over what he does and what his department is doing. So this law is necessary. It's a democratic law, and the police force should be ran democratically by the community. There's countries in the world right now that have law enforcement systems set up in this way, and you do not see those countries having police killing people almost every day. So thank you. I see the rest of my time.
Thank you. Crystal.
Hi, I definitely think there needs to be a huge separation.
Crystal, can you pull that microphone down?
Yeah, I definitely think there needs to be a huge separation between how involved the mayor is with the police ombudsman and having the police involved in their own investigations is obviously not a great way to go. I've also dealt with the police ombudsman myself a couple times, and the outcome, I didn't get an outcome. Much like justice, I have a couple letters, as well as my sister and co-founder has had to deal with the police ombudsman when she was assaulted by the police, and she also never heard back from the police ombudsman. There's a lot of unsolved, uninvestigated cases that continue to happen and that aren't getting the time that they deserve as it is, nor the space to keep those people safe as well. Yeah, I think that's... There's also a lot of people out there that have a hard time calling the police ombudsman because of that connection to the police, whether they be a woman, a person of color, they're poor, houseless, whatever it is. They have these insecurities that hold them back from even calling those places because nobody has made it a safe place for the people, and I think that needs to be a priority.
Thanks for coming down. Alexis Taneska. Welcome.
We definitely need oversight of the police. It needs to be as transparent as possible. All of us here pay the police through our taxes, so we are paying and paying and paying for the police. We deserve something back, and that includes transparency, that includes being held accountable. There is no other occupation that does not get held accountable in this entire place, any, not even unpaid occupations. Being a parent, you're held accountable. Being a nurse, being a teacher, being on city council, all of you are held accountable. I'm held accountable. No one should be above that, especially the people who are enforcing the laws on other people. They need to follow the same laws that they're enforcing on others. They are not above those laws. They are not better than any of us. They do not deserve more space to mess up than any of us, and they need to be held accountable so that they can learn from their behaviors and do better in the future. Letting behaviors go that are harmful to the community, especially when they're derogatory and they're disproportionately aimed at certain demographics in our community, is not right, and it's not acceptable.
Thanks for coming down. Dennis Flynn. And after Dennis is Tanya Comstock, and then James Leidy. Welcome, you have up to three minutes.
Thank you. Getting used to these. Well, I'm not going to disparage all the police. I think some leaders that I've had the benefit of being, learning from have told me, you know, typically you should assume people come with good intent. I think that most of the officers do work with good intent. I have had my run-ins with police. Yeah, I've had guys maybe on a bad day, maybe they're just a jerk. I've been a jerk on many of my bad days. In most instances that I've had interaction with the police, it's been positive. The Ombudsman's Office was here last week, I think it was, giving their annual report. Didn't sound like they don't respond to reports. It sounds like they're very thorough and methodical in their response to that. As to whether or not Midol should be subject to the Ombudsman's review, I don't know. I'm not here to talk about whether or not that is something that you should be voting for tonight or not. What I am saying is that I oppose this as an emergency ordinance. This should go through normal procedure. And we've seen change in Spokane over the last couple decades from, you know, a weak mayor with an administrator, a strong city council, and now a strong mayor. Language has changed in different statutes along the time, so this is not something that you need to make as an emergency measure. This is something that needs to be measured and thoughtful and hopefully come up with a better product than what we have now that'll stand the test of time. It seems to burn the buns is that the mayor has thus far decided not to initiate an investigation, but that is lawfully within her determination per the current statute. So if voters think that's an issue, we see election signs going up all over town. I mean, we'll soon have a chance to make our voices heard on that until such ordinance is changed or the statutes change. I would just say that people voted in a strong mayor form of government, which contrasts the call-out in the text of your ordinance, that people voted for an unrestricted OPO and OPOC. So what the people want isn't as clear-cut as your ordinance implies. I'd say it's, there's no emergency here. It's wrong to call it one. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Dennis. Tanya. And after Tanya is James Leidy, and then Debbie Novak.
I think the old ombudsman and the chief of police are letting the cops lie to citizens out here, you know, when they come and check on other people. And when they say that, when they ask us, you know, how we're doing, you know, and see if we need to go to the ER, they tell us that they don't make us go to the ER, you know, when they do, you know? Because when I got a, when the police checked on me at a friend's place one time, they told me that I didn't have to go to the ER, but they made me go that time. And I kept telling them that I was fine that day, too, and I wanted to stay at my friend's, but they made me go to the ER that time. And I think we need a new ombudsman that, right now, and they need to make, change the rules for the cops, too, that they can't be lying to citizens, too, because they're teaching kids how to lie to their, to other people, too, when they're in school right now, too.
Thanks for coming down, Tanya. James Leidy. You have up to three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's James Leidy, and in conversations like this, we often see people talk about law enforcement and activists, and they make these claims that these people that are asking for accountability are anti-police. Not always. There are some anti-police people out there, but there's just a lot of people out there asking for accountability. And so when people get up here and say, "I'm not going to get up here and besmirch law enforcement," we're not doing that. We're asking for accountability, and that's something we should all want. And when it comes to the chief of police, accountability should be number one because he is leading our police department. We are asking that he holds himself accountable, that we have the right to look at his actions and find out if he did something wrong. He should be asked about these things. He should have to answer to these things. We should not ignore it, and we need to identify and acknowledge that there's preferential treatment that goes on. It can be as simple as what took place here tonight, where my Spokane citizen, Alexis here, was talking about how she was being, how she felt when you had a religious group here proselytizing to us, and you allowed them to do it. And when she went to speak about it, she was shut down. That's not right. We should not have preferential treatment. We should not allow five or six people to get up here and profligate, and then when somebody wants to speak about it, be told no. That's why when we look at the Spokane Police Department, we need to have oversight, because they're showing preferential treatment to different groups, and that's not right. So I am asking that we go ahead and investigate Chief Midol, and if there's nothing that he did, if there's something that he did wrong, let's hold him accountable. If he didn't do anything wrong, then we can move on, but we shouldn't give him special privileges of not being investigated. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Leidy. Debbie Novak, and then Terry Hill, and then Natalie Poulsen.
President Beggs and council members, I'm Debbie Novak, an impacted family member and also a member of the Washington Coalition for Police Accountability. And Midol's Minute, it's come up several times tonight, I watched that today, and I've also researched what I'm going to speak to you about. And of course, this involves a group of businesses downtown and Council Member Wilkerson. And of course, it involves myself because there was a lot of things that happened during my son's investigation as far as for records. This initiative was approved on the ballot for the ombudsman. This was in 2013. The people of Spokane voted this initiative in, and I find it hard to believe that it wasn't meant to include our chief of police. I believe that the voters understood it to include our chief of police. He's certified as a police officer. He carries a gun. It should include him. Throughout the country and Washington State, the laws are finally being changed to address law enforcement investigating themselves. It is an obvious conflict of interest, and you would have to look long and hard to find anyone that agrees that a law enforcement agency should be investigating itself. This is what the topic is tonight. There is no other profession, as someone spoke about here just a minute ago, that does this except for law enforcement. It has gone on for too long with them getting away with this atrocity. It is ridiculous for us to even have a conversation about it. We've already seen what happens when the city decides to investigate itself, and I refer to Otto Zem, and I refer to my son, David Novak, and many others. I just can't grasp why this is so hard for the Spokane City Police to understand, that people, voters, are not going to stand for this type of investigation any longer. This particular investigation is in regards to the business group downtown, Wilkerson and myself, and in my case, the city was fined $11,380 for failing to release information. This was after three years of asking for items to be released. Imagine what it's like to try to prove that records that you don't have exist. This is a pattern, and it must stop. Chief Midol should welcome an investigation to clear his name. He needs to be accountable, just like his patrol officers and as the voters have said. I wanted to quote, this was Midol when he was put into his position of chief of police. It was in The Inlander, and it's a quote, "I pledged to admit our mistakes and when we could have done something better and to be as transparent as I can while striving within disclosure laws."
That's the end of your three minutes tonight.
Please approve this ordinance.
Thanks for coming down. Terry Hill. And after Terry is Natalie Poulsen, and then Anton Balon. Welcome to City Council. You have up to three minutes.
Good evening, Council President, Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Terry Hill, longtime Spokane resident, proud graduate of North Central High School, retired STA paratransit driver. I speak tonight in favor of this ordinance. In 2013, nearly 70% of the voters voted for independent police oversight. Silly us, we didn't spell it out, that that includes the chief of police. The chief of police who makes major decisions for the department, and he's not held accountable? Give me a break. The voters did not vote to have an ombudsman making $90,000 a year, to have to crawl in to the police guild's office and get their permission to look at a video or to do his independent investigation. I urge you to pass this measure. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Terry. Natalie Poulsen. She's gone. Anton Balon. There you are. And after Anton, George Taylor.
Hello, everybody. My name is Anton. Okay. Well, the police of chief, talking about corruption is all I heard. You know, it's sad, and it's a shame that anyone in a public position should feel that they are power. Even you guys in your positions to support such person, for what I have heard and what I have seen, you know? No one has the authority or the power over anybody in any public office. And I urge you guys to support this, to investigate him, because he is a citizen just like everybody else, and his oath that he made is a joke, and I'm sure that you guys don't want to be a joke in this world. Okay? I urge you guys to pass that. And if Nadine wants to support her, support him, let her go with him, because that's not right, and that's injustice. That's the corruption in the system, not only at the federal level, it all down where we're at right now. Okay? I urge you to use your conscience, if you have one, and if you don't, I guess you'll go on the other side. And if you do have a conscience, if you do have a God in your heart, like you allow the people to say, live with, be honest with yourself, be honest to your God. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Anton. George Taylor. Welcome, you have up to three minutes.
Thank you, Council President. My name is George Taylor. I speak in favor of the ordinance tonight. I am a resident of Spokane City District Two. Council members Wilkerson and Kinnear are my representatives. I serve as a pastor of All Saints Lutheran Church in Brown's addition. I also served as night manager at Cannon Street Shelter when it was managed by Jules Helping Hands. As a pastor, I believe in strict separation between church and state, and my remarks tonight are as a private citizen and not on behalf of my church or any church. It seems to me that trust is the glue that holds together any relationship and holds together any healthy community. That is why I urge you to vote in favor of amending the municipal code to strengthen the Police Ombudsman Commission to include investigating any matter regarding the Spokane Police Department. Trust has to go both ways, between both our police and the citizens they are sworn to protect and serve. The police have to trust the citizens and the judicial system to protect and support them when they go into harm's way on our behalf. On the other hand, the citizens have to trust that their police will treat them with respect and according to the rule of law. In the wake of the Otto Zem killing, the citizens of Spokane voted in 2013 by an overwhelming majority to put into place a citizen police oversight body. majority to put into place a citizen police oversight body called the Ombudsman Commission and authorize the funding and appointment of an Ombudsman in the office that now is in the City Hall. A federal court consent decree was issued later to the Spokane Police Department to come into compliance. The spirit and intent of the Ombudsman and the Ombudsman Office was to ensure a completely independent and transparent investigation. At the same time, measures were made to protect the police from frivolous complaints and allegation of police abuse that were without merit. So now we have a good Ombudsman, a functioning Ombudsman Commission. Vote this ordinance and let them do their work. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. And that's the end of community comment on this ordinance. Any council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I kind of thought somebody else might pick this up, but maybe I'm the only one that sees it this way. So my concern is, if we make this change, I don't believe there is any entity left that actually can investigate the chief. I think there are some natural obstacles in the code and the contract that prevents the Ombudsman realistically from being able to investigate the chief. So there's a number of places throughout the code where essentially a working relationship between the two is absolutely necessary for the Ombudsman to be able to do his work and his job and to do it in an effective way. We've heard a lot of people tonight talk about wanting the police broadly speaking investigated. 100%. That's absolutely why we have an independent Ombudsman System, why 69% of my voters approved the Ombudsman Initiative in 2013. The problem is, again, that Ombudsman has to have a working relationship with the chief in the code, several times stated, for that to work expeditiously, appropriately, accurately, for there really to be a good outcome at all if you want folks being held accountable. So, and I think that the Council President presented an amendment earlier today that I do think is actually very helpful because it acknowledges that there likely is a conflict of interest and some other entity needs to be the investigating entity. But I would like to go far further. I have an amendment. I know the rules are still suspended from earlier today, and so I can make that amendment. I don't, I don't know if, pull it up here. I don't know where everybody is on this concept, but my thinking is we need something bigger than the Ombudsman. We need some sort of a citywide inspector general. That is really truly how we are going to have independent investigations across the board. So we have the Ombudsman, who is chartered to have that independent oversight of the police body, but there's really nobody looking at all the other departments, the department heads, such as the Chief of Police. And so what we really need is some sort of an inspector general. The ordinance that I came up with, I shared it with Councilmembers Bingle and Council President Beggs before the meeting just to get some input. Wasn't sure if I'd make a motion on this or not tonight, but I will make this motion. And so essentially, it just adds to what the Council President had already included. And I'll just read the full thing. Quote, "The independent police Ombudsman shall possess the authority to initiate or participate in an investigation of the Chief of Police solely in the absence of any other mechanism established for independent oversight. Out of interest in comedy, the OPO shall strive to let other entities perform any investigation of the Chief of Police." That last sentence was the Council President's amendment from earlier. So I'll make the motion to add that. I think it's important that we actually create some sort of a larger independent oversight, especially for department heads, the head of a department in which we have independent oversight, more or less, but the chief has to be a part of that and part of those discussions. And we're trying to improve that, but that all comes through contract negotiations. The state legislature has not given us the authority to make these sorts of changes. And so that has to come through negotiations, and that takes time, months, years, decades to get there. And so if we want something to happen now and you actually want an entity that can oversee the chief and has that ability, then I think we need something bigger than the Ombudsman. So voting for this, against this, I honestly don't think it does much, except for probably makes it harder to investigate the chief if it passes as is. That's just my sense.
I have a question. Question, so when you're talking about a bigger entity or a higher entity, is that entity elected? Is it appointed? Because we've got to keep the politics out of it.
It's not established. I mean, obviously, it doesn't exist at this moment in time. And so I'm just trying to create a framework that maybe encourages us to get there. But, but no, it would have to be independent of the elected bodies. That's the only way independent oversight can work. But I think we need it for a whole host of things, from public records to, you know, the issues that we're dealing with here.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. I'm going to speak in favor of your concept, but against your language at the moment, just to be clear. We had a good discussion about it today. I, I just think we need to get that in place. If we don't have it in place yet, it's hard to anticipate it. Hopefully, we will have a new contract with the police that will address some of these issues and will create that. I won't be here to vote on a future IG. I've, for a long time, also endorsed that, but I think we need to do that. Tonight's ordinance simply takes away the language, I think, that was ill-advised back in 2013 that kind of goes against the charter. It doesn't say that the Ombudsman has to investigate the chief or that, but it kind of takes away an artificial thing that contradicts the charter. So that's why I'm in favor of the simpler and not a little more of the complex. So I'm against your amendment for tonight, but if we could come up with something bigger, I think that is missing on a host of things around the city. And it's challenging because I think when people have envisioned inspector general, they think about for all the employees, and since they're in bargaining units, you can't do that. But what you're talking about tonight, which is intriguing to me, is something that's only for the people not part of the bargaining unit and the city itself. Public records, whether they should release them or not, some other types of issues. So I think there is potential to do that. I just don't know if legislating that on the dais tonight, it doesn't work for me, but I like the concept where you're headed. Councilmember Kinnear.
Thank you. And Councilmember Cathcart, I agree that that is very intriguing, and we did discuss this years ago. It seemed like a good idea then. I think that it would be worthwhile to flesh this out when we have more time. And we will be revisiting this once the contracts are finalized because we're going to have to do some more work on screwing up the ordinance and the SMC. That will give you more time to flesh this out and really put some teeth to it because I think it has merit. I just think it's premature at this juncture to consider it, but I would support this for a future consideration.
Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, I totally agree. When we were in the office earlier, or in the conference room earlier discussing this, I do, and really, any, any city employee, any public official, you know, the, the public has the right to know and, and deserves that, that ability. I am worried with the language that we have here that it presents some legal challenges that wouldn't get us what we're trying to accomplish here. And, but I do support Councilmember Cathcart's amendment here. The ability to investigate the police chief, I think, does fall within the spirit of what the, the voters approved. And I think it would be wise of the city. I think it would be a good practice to have it be an independent person investigating the, the chief, considering the relationship that the Ombudsman and the police chief need to have. I think it just makes sense from a practicality standpoint. For that reason, I would support Councilmember Cathcart's amendment. Also, I remember in 2019, when I was running for mayor, I think I was advocating for an inspector general then, and I think that it does make a lot of sense in a lot of ways for the ability for any city department to make sure that they're doing what the citizens have tasked them with doing. So I would support the amendment tonight. I think it's, it's a good step forward.
Councilmember Straton.
As one of those that was here a while back when we talked about this, I, I support it. I think that there's some positive, creative things we can do. My concern is that, and I think we've all gotten the emails and the phone calls, and we've talked to people who are ready for a change now. They want to see us moving forward. And to be really honest, somebody's got to lead this. I mean, they're, the lack of leadership that I see, and I've been in City Hall since 2005. This is the worst I've seen as far as conflict with police, citizens, council members, staff. It's not great. And so what I would like to do is save that discussion, see what we can do in the future to, to make those changes. But I think we owe the citizens a vote that we believe in this ordinance. We want to move it forward. I think people were so upset by the latest regarding public records that I would like to move forward with a vote to, so people know that we care about this issue and we're listening. And then maybe down the road, make those changes and not take so much time to do that. But I, yeah, I agree that we've talked a lot about a inspector general.
Councilmembers DePauw.
Yeah. I can't support that amendment right now. Just hearing about it right now, but at nine o'clock at night, but definitely, I hear the spirit behind it and definitely support the spirit. I think it assures the public that there's not corruption happening in the city government. I think that's the fear right now. When we're hearing and seeing this right now, it seems like there is no checks and balances on the mayor's ability and her relationship, or any mayor's relationship with their cabinet. If they're the only person doing the investigation into their cabinet and people don't feel like that's being fair, then what's the recourse? I believe it's our role as council to do that oversight. I think that is fundamental in our constitution and our city council here, to have that checks and balances. Some air conditioning. So I won't support that now, but definitely interested in following up on that because I think there's a lot of distrust right now in city government, and I think that could help.
And the real magic pill for, for me, I think for all of us, as we've wandered through this whole process, the magic pill is finding a way to keep the politics out of public safety. Right? I mean, we, we have a responsibility to keep our residents safe, and it doesn't matter what the politics of the mayor's office or the council office or even the police chief, none of that should come into this. And unfortunately, I think there, the optics are that it has come into this. And that's really the piece we've got to focus on, is how we raise this up enough that it is a priority and the politics can't push it one way or the other. Because here we are, and we're kind of at a point where there's no trust, and people are feeling really uneasy with a police chief that, you know, is a nice guy, but all of this stuff that's come out in the public, and it's all so political, that's what's got to stop.
Aside from the distraction of the side door, other, other comments? I just had a request from Councilmember Kinnear to just explain one piece if this amendment doesn't pass, how it would probably work to try to meet its things. One, we did put in language that doesn't require, but it, it guides the OPO to use this legal term called comedy, which is even if you have the power and authority, it doesn't mean you have to exercise it in order to respect different branches of government and things like that. And then the decider under our current law, so again, this wouldn't require the OPO to do anything, and typically, the OPO simply rides as an observer to whatever other investigation is going on. So I would imagine that would go on. But in a rare case where the law enforcement or administration refuses to do one, the Ombudsman Commission, which is independent of the Ombudsman, they make the call of whether to use an outside third-party person or not. The Ombudsman doesn't have a say in that. It doesn't get you to the IG world. That's, that's where you've got a dedicated person on the job, you know, it's way better. It's pretty hard to get the Ombudsman Commission. I don't think they've ever authorized an outside third party, but that, that is kind of how it would work in the interim for people's knowledge. All right, there's an amendment for us. All those in favor of the amendment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
No. Councilmember Kinnear.
Nay.
Okay. She's a Scottish nay. Any abstentions? No. Okay, so the amendment doesn't pass at this point. Any further conversation by council members on the underlying ordinance?
Council President, can you just clarify again? Because I think the discussion's been a lot for the public.
Okay.
Exactly what
Sure.
Voting on this would, would do.
There's just two pieces to it. One, there was some language put in the ordinance back in 2013, the different mayor, different council, that implies that the Ombudsman, the one person in the police department, he or she can't investigate, is the police chief, and that, that is the mayor and HR's job to do. It's not part of the collective bargaining agreement, to my knowledge. It's not in the charter, but that was there. So this just removes that sentence, and then it adds a sentence that we talked about this afternoon, Councilmembers Cathcart and Bingle and I, of this idea of the Ombudsman, we keep saying Ombudsman, it doesn't have to be a male. One of these days, it's going to be an Ombuds person, maybe in the next update of the code, that they just respect the issue of comedy between the administration and the Ombuds Office when they're carrying out their duties, but they're not restricted in their duties, just to keep that in mind. It's pretty simple. There was another version that was super complex and had everything that had changed in the contract two years ago, and we decided to not do that now, especially since hopefully we're, we might get a new police contract that will have even further things.
But this does allow a potential investigation if the OPO decides.
It, it, really, what it did is, just to be legalistic about it, it takes away any restriction that was in the ordinance. It doesn't really flesh it out. It doesn't say they have to do it or how to do it, or it just takes away the restriction that was there.
But it, doesn't it also give the Ombudsman and the Commission better access and unrestricted access to public records and documents?
No. That, all that was stripped out of this version.
Okay. So I have that wrong.
Yeah. That is for a future version.
Okay.
And this is why I would love a deferral for a couple of weeks on this because there's been many versions of this going around. It's been hard to digest which ones we're voting on, which ones we're doing. There are many legal concerns from our, from our city legal department that I would love to get some more information on before moving forward with this because I 100% believe in police oversight. I just want to make sure that we are doing it in, in the proper way. And I'm concerned that I don't fully understand all the different changes that have happened in this. And I appreciate, you know, you being open to the discussion and everything like that. And I think everybody is, and I think we're all in favor of police oversight. Just wanting to make sure that we have our ducks in a row on this because the understanding I have is that this does open us up to a fair amount of litigation on this particular item, so.
I have not heard that on this version. On the, on the one that tried to do the wholesale changes to the code for the collective bargaining, I've heard unless the union is fine with it, and I haven't heard any complaints from the union by it, and I've had some discussions. But, but this one is the very, so I haven't really heard any concern from legal lately once we showed them the charter language. I haven't heard any concerns from them.
Yeah. I would happily show you a, a text message here from one of our lawyers, if you'd like to see it, that, that does say it, it opens us up, and then it might be a, a problem for us, and so.
Can you read that?
No, it's confidential.
Yeah.
Oh, I guess you can. Sorry.
Yeah. And, and so that's where, again, I don't disagree with the, the concept, just want to make sure we have our ducks in a row.
I wish we had all got it.
Yeah, it would be nice.
I can, I can forward it to you all.
We did this already, right?
We've done, we've done this a lot on a lot of different versions because there's been a lot of different versions, but.
They'll let us know.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other, any discussion or council commentary?
Yeah. Some commentary, yeah. I will be supporting this. I think it's really important. I think fundamentally, this is an issue about transparency. The charter that people voted on is clear. It says the OPO is established to, quote, "reassure the public that investigations into complaints and allegations of police misconduct are conducted in a timely, thorough, and an objective manner." At no point does it say not including the police chief. So the intent is for all police in the police department to be transparent. the intent is for all police in the police department to be transparent. Going back and looking at the philosophy of Spokane Police Department, they wrote in the, or the OPO in their closing report stated that they discussed amongst themselves to have a philosophy to err on the side of transparency. That is why they closed an investigation to make sure that there was body camera footage that was publicly made available to err on the side of transparency. So this is about transparency, and there's a lack of transparency right now. The mayor has a choice and could build the community trust if she would just start an investigation, one way or the other, so that the community can know what happened. And she's not doing that. So we have to look into that. There's been 21 organizations that have reached out to city council, to the city, to file a complaint, to register a complaint about this. So there's a lot of community concern around the police chief's actions, and whether he followed city policy, whether he has favoritism. There's just a lot of concerns. So people should be asking themselves, why? Why does the mayor not want to respond to the community concern? Why does the mayor refuse to start an investigation on the chief of police? Why is the mayor not doing anything? Well, one coincidentally timed thing was 10 days after the mayor wrote a letter to city council asking, or saying that she was okay with the chief of police conduct, the chief donated to her political campaign 10 days after that. That is another reason of the public asking themselves, why? It seems like there is something behind the scenes that the mayor doesn't want us to know. So if this is one opportunity that we could clear the air, to find out more information, to exonerate the chief, to hold him accountable, just to have the public know what is happening behind the scenes, what is the chief's role, what was the mayor's role in all of this? I don't know. So I think that this is an important step to potentially have more transparency.
Any other council commentary?
Well, I'll just comment. We're not setting precedent here. We have had a police chief investigation in the past that has come before this council. So this started out, in my opinion, when it got to this point. It's really an HR issue that got kind of blown up and out of proportion, and got us to this point where it is so, it's just such a hot mess. But it didn't have to get here if we had stepped up and just let HR handle this when it came to the forefront. But now here we are. So we are not setting precedent. It has happened in the past.
Yeah, I would just add on to that. Councilmember Wilkerson's right. It's not even the first investigation on this chief of police. There's been an investigation on this chief of police for Facebook comments, something way less impactful than this. So I don't know why the mayor, the mayor did the right thing before, and I don't know why the mayor's not doing it anymore.
Any other council commentary?
I think it's time to move forward, to at least move towards the perfect setup, if we ever get there. But I support this. I think we owe it to the people we represent, the people that we've heard from, that we do something to make sure that those types of actions, that somebody's looking, somebody's, you know, taken a look to see if what's being done is ethical, is legal. I mean, it's a whole big pot of, you're right, it's a big mess. But I think this will at least move us, start us moving forward and having the discussion.
All right. Any last comments?
Yeah, I'm going to make the motion to defer to June 26th. Not because I disagree with this, because I think I could really be on board with this. But again, I understand, Council President, what you're telling me. The legal advice that I've been given is not the same, and they might be talking about different things. I just don't know that.
There's motion?
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion on the motion?
Again, I wish we had a meeting next week, and we wouldn't need to defer two weeks. But we don't, for good reason. Like I said, I think there is a way that I could vote for this. I just need to get these questions answered. And unfortunately, with all the different versions that we've had, with the, you know, short amount of time that we've been given, it's tough to, yep.
All those in favor of the motion to defer till June 26th indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no?
No.
No?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Okay, motion doesn't pass. Any other comments before we vote? Prepare to vote. Councilmember Kinnear, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, now pass the six to one. And that gets us to another emergency ordinance.
Ordinance C-36398, establishing the Spokane opioid abatement council and defining its composition, powers, and duties, adopting a new chapter 4.39 to Title IV of the Spokane municipal code, and declaring an emergency.
All right. And this is, we were recipients and participants in a settlement with some opioid manufacturers and distributors. And as part of it, we have to set up one of these advisory, or excuse me, opioid abatement councils to kind of review how we spend the money. And there's some talk about doing a regional one. That has not come together. But in order to comply with the settlement, we need to get one going. And that's what this does. And there is some community comment. Three people, Justice for All, Megra Flatman and Zach McGuckin. Welcome.
When it comes down to the drug crisis within Spokane, we know the opioid epidemic was the very big start for a lot of that. That was not done because people just chose to be on drugs. That was done because people were trying to find relief from some of the pains and medical treatment that they needed to receive in order to, you know, function. Unfortunately, the opioid epidemic is something that we still face today, and a Spokane opioid abatement council is something that's very needed. I know that this was supposed to be done on June 1st, but I would like us to not delay or to think about these things up in the forefront. A lot of the times, the people who are impacted are not on these councils. The people who have gone through recovery are not on these councils. Right now, we're only discussing the funding for this council, but I would also ask that we also make sure that we get the right people at the table. We get people who have lived experience. We get people who have treatment experience, as well as counselors who work with populations that are drug addicted. Thank you.
Megra Flatman?
Just a second.
Megra, if you want to hit star three, but I lost my co-pilot here really quickly. Maybe I'm going to go to Zach first, and then McGuckin. Just a moment, Megra.
How's it going? Yeah, so I want to also state that I think this is absolutely crucial, and I back everything that Justice for All said. And I want to state also, we need to make sure that we have the right people at the table, but also that that table's in a transparent room, so that the public and everyone who is affected, whether they're on this council or not, which is everyone in the city of Spokane, has a right to know what's going on, and has a right to have a say in what's going on. These resources are given to our city, which supposedly, we supposedly democratically control. And so we need to be able to control where these resources get allocated to. And so transparency at all stages of the process is absolutely crucial. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Megra, if you're still there, if you want to hit star three. All right, Megra, welcome back.
Thank you. Spokane's drug crisis will not be solved by punitive measures such as jail. Data from the Bureau of Justice Assistance proves that addiction treatment reduces recidivism. Data from the National Drug Court Institute concurs with this. Data from reports that Spokane itself has paid for, such as the 2008 and 2020 update Bennett Latin Consulting Report, also agrees. We need this opioid abatement council not just to comply with settlement, but to expand addiction services. Eight people died in Spokane County Jail in 2017 and 2018. Some died because they were either going through withdrawal or needed medical services that they were denied. People who have an addiction, people who need help, are not receiving it in Spokane County Jail. This is not just a thing of the past. On June 8th, another man died in Spokane Jail. Spokane has made millions, paid millions in settlements over these tragic, imperventable deaths. Addiction treatment saves lives while the jail continues to kill. We need the Spokane opioid abatement council to implement addiction services to combat the drug crisis compassionately and successfully. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council commentary?
So, Council President, sorry.
Yep.
This doesn't keep us from partnering with other organizations in the future, right?
Nope. Just gets us in the game, and then we can do whatever we want on agreements we agree to. All right, prepare to vote. How do you vote, Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
All right, now pass the seven to zero. All right, next.
Resolution 2023-42, acknowledging the recommendation of the Neighborhood Project Advisory Committee for the West Quadrant Tax Increment Financing District in accepting the use of $500,000 in TIF funding for a program to partially repay permanently affordable housing developers for property purchase costs in the West Central neighborhood.
Good evening again, Council President, members of the council. It's good to see you. I will be very brief, because it's getting hot enough to bake cookies in this room. So just very quickly, this is the request that we've talked about many times before for half a million dollars from the West Quadrant TIF. This would fund permanently affordable housing, as defined by the state, within West Central neighborhood and within the TIF district itself. It does not fund anything within Kendall Yards, because it's coming from the project money that is earmarked for outside of Kendall Yards. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer questions if you have them.
Councilmember Stratton?
I have to thank you. You are a rock star. Thank you for the time and effort you've put into this. I am so proud that this is finally up and moving through, and West Central feels a little empowered to spend some of this money and do some good things, and the fact that they really are welcoming affordable housing in the neighborhood. So thank you for your efforts. It's been a long road, and I know there's going to be more and more coming, but this is a, this is a great, great start.
Thank you very much. Yeah, we really hope this is a pilot program that can be expanded and used again and again
Yes.
in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. Councilmember Kinnear, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right. That is a long time coming.
Yes.
Congratulations, West Central. All right. One of the more exciting items tonight. If you want to read that, I think you have to read it in its entirety, because it was placed on at the last minute.
Right. Resolution 2023-45, a resolution approving the appointment of Gerald Haynes as the Director of Office of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion for the city of Spokane, whereas Section 24 of the city charter provides that the mayor shall have the power to appoint department heads subject to the approval of the city council. And whereas Section 2.14F of the city council rules of procedure states that approval of appointment of department head shall be by resolution during the city council's legislative session. And whereas after full consideration, Mayor Nadine Woodward has appointed Gerald Haynes as the Director of Office of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion for the city of Spokane. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council for the city of Spokane that it hereby approves the appointment of Gerald Haynes as the Director of Office of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion for the city of Spokane.
All right. There are three people requested to testify. Justice for All, Anwar Peace, and Dennis Flynn. Welcome.
I just want to congratulate Gerald Haynes on this appointment. This is something that should have happened a long time ago. I was actually on the council to look for other candidates from outside of the state. And we did interview Andres Portales, who actually did want to take the job. He went through the entire interview process, and then last minute, just like the first time that this process was kind of fudged up, the mayor kind of went on her own route of how to do things. At least this time, it didn't completely dishevel the process and made it so we can actually have somebody in this position. But Andres Portales was actually, I don't believe, I'm saying the last name wrong, was actually a terrific candidate who was willing to take the job. It was just very weird that we had so much time spent, including time I put into looking for alternative candidates, and then we chose such a spectacular candidate that we already had in our back pocket. A lot of confusion there, but again, I'm really happy with the outcome. I just want to make sure as we seek outside, people from out of state, that we treat them a little bit better, that we have a better understanding of where they're coming from as well. Again, this person was a fantastic candidate. I was also qualified for this position. But these last-minute kind of changes of people doing whatever they want, unfortunately, doesn't look good or doesn't make our government function well. Once again, Gerald Haynes is a fantastic choice. And I did misquote, it was not Gerald Haynes from a couple of weeks ago talking about the ombudsman's office. That was actually Lucas Jasmine. Thank you.
My name is Anwar Peace, and I am the Chair of the Human Rights Commission. And I am here to thoroughly support Gerald Haynes in his appointment to the Office of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion. And I look forward to his vision for this office. As you all know, the Human Rights Commission was an advocate for getting this office up and running. And the Human Rights Commission was also a part of the first interview process that was referred to earlier that did not go so well. And so I just want to publicly acknowledge and thank Mr. Haynes for sticking in this process with all the political merry-go-round that took place. I am so thrilled that such a wonderful candidate, somebody that I trust with advice on a regular basis. Mr. Haynes has made me a better community leader with that advice. And he's a great dude. Like, right now, he's, I believe, at Ferris. He's a Ferris High School coach. And they're doing football practice right now. And I hope Gerald has the pads out and have those kids hitting the pads. But I'm just so thrilled with this pick, and I definitely urge everyone to vote for this candidate. Thank you so much.
All right, Dennis Flynn.
Hi, Dennis Flynn. I live near St. Charles. Resources and choices, siloed experts versus the big picture. Regarding the Office of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion, I come not about the position being filled. I come to you with deep concerns regarding choices that will impact the civil rights of impressionable, malleable, and therefore vulnerable children. The last few health directors have demonstrated that bureaucrats unwilling to say truth to power can have disastrous consequences. I hope the new director of the Office of Civil Rights will demonstrate the integrity to stand up for what's good and right in the face of what's unjust and evil. I have no principled position against all of the, all of last week's activities in this chamber, including the mayor's proclamation. I respect all people's rights to pursue life, liberty, and happiness and expect the same respect for my rights. What I do take a principled stand for, and I hope you and the new director do as well, is what's best for our Spokane community. Note, I didn't say communities, but rather community. We are all part of the Spokane community, no matter what other subset communities we align with. I hope you and the new director will also keep the big picture in view regarding Spokane's first wellness clinic to be attached to Logan Elementary. SPS's website highlights how influential the system is on the character building of our children, especially highlighting social emotional learning. Teachers and school administrators know they have a huge influence on child development. We should all agree that that vast influence must be used for our children's good and not for their bad. I emailed you evidence that depending on the study, 60 to 90% of youth expressing gender confusion will desist and identify with their biological sex, whatever their ultimate sexual attraction, after puberty, if they're provided loving and watchful, waiting care. But less than 10% will desist of provided gender-affirming or gender-conforming care. After reviewing what I sent and doing your own research, I hope you will agree with my position that providing gender-affirming care in our schools, possibly through this attached clinic, is a civil rights violation against gay and cis people. Siloed experts who think they know better than the evidence shows do exist in our schools. An attached health clinic should be a serious concern.
Are we still on the director?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
For all this, really rather a reprehensible crime could be imposed on our children. Even worse is rotten decision to first target an economically disadvantaged group of schoolchildren in the Logan Neighborhood, which is the civil rights violation. I urge this council and the new director of civil rights to work with the SPS, the Health District, and the operating company to put safeguards in place and require parental notification and interactive involvement in any care provided to their children in the attached clinic. Honestly, I would prefer you put any plan on the clinic on permanent hold.
Hey, no, you don't.
You have the rule of the chamber.
So, you're out of, you're out of, you're out of order at this point. You're in the audience. Councilmembers can raise it. I've already raised it once.
I'm sorry, I was talking about civil rights. Honestly, I would prefer you put any plan on an attached clinic on hold until you educate and inform the public on the limits of the parental rights.
We're done with your time, so.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm very excited to have Gerald taking on this position permanently. And I think I shared earlier, five minutes after the press release went out, I called him and said, "All right, let's get language access implemented." And on that note, we do have an ordinance coming. Been working with Alex on an ordinance that will make, that will pilot language access inside the council office as well as in our planning department, and then hopefully we can expand from there as, as we can. So, look forward to that, look forward to having Gerald on board, to helping to lead that and shepherd that forward.
Any other council commentary? I just also want to say how excited I am at two levels. One, that we have this position filled. I think we funded it since 2018, so that's, even though it's a long road and took too long, it's great to have someone, and it's great to have someone as qualified and as much of a strong positive influence in the community as Gerald Haynes. And he said today when he was meeting with us that his top priority is to get the two positions that we funded long ago filled so that the office can really stretch itself and be as, as many things to as many people as possible. So, with that, prepare to vote. Councilmember Kinnear, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right, that passed the seven to zero. All right, and could you first read the first reading ordinances and then we'll talk about what we're going to do about testimony?
Ordinance C.36399 relating to the regulation of illegal activities in public spaces and repealing Chapter 10.76 of the Spokane Municipal Code. Ordinance C.36394 relating to parks amending Section 12.06A.040 of the Spokane Municipal Code concerning park rules and regulations. Ordinance C.36396 relating to the regulation of illegal activities in public spaces amending 12.06A.040 of the Spokane Municipal Code and repealing Chapter 10.76 of the Spokane Municipal Code. And the first reading, or excuse me, the first reading of ordinances, C.36391 and C.36392 are deferred to June 26th with final reading to be held July 10, 2023. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinances.
So, we have 13 people signed up. We're past our 9:30 time typically. If we don't do a motion, then that gets continued to the next meeting. But I don't know what your others is, if you want to give people some time or extend, I'm not sure.
Make the motion to extend, that, you know, people have been waiting this, this time. Yeah. In the heat.
I would specifically like to hear from people who have not had the opportunity to speak tonight in open forum. I don't know what that looks like, but.
That's one person, but, but anyway, you have a motion to extend with regular three minutes.
I'd be open to a friendly amendment to two if that's what people wanted, but, you know, definitely I think people deserve the right to speak tonight, so.
So, your motion is two?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Two minutes.
All right. All right, any further discussion? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
I don't know that I actually made that amendment. I said I'd be open to it, but.
We're rolling with it.
It's yours now.
I restated it for you and you said yes, so, okay. All right.
I wasn't paying attention.
Okay. All right, all right, let's start with Will Hewlings, who we have not heard from yet. And after Will, we have Justice for All and then Anwar Peace.
Good evening. My name is Will Hewlings. I live downtown Spokane. I'm not sure when I'm, I was hoping to speak earlier, but you guys switched stuff around. So, basically, when I'm, this ordinance, C.36394, I'm reading through this. It says the city has an important governmental interest in protecting the health, safety, and lives of its residents and in reducing the community impact of drug possession and drug use. Well, I take great, when it comes to the parks, this is kind of going off, I'm not going to be talking so much about what happens at night, but what happens in the daytime concerns me because I got attacked in the park by someone with a knife that pulled it out threatening to kill me. So, Jason Conley from the Parks Department, or whoever it was, the Parks Rangers, these Parks security guards, trespassed me, excluded me for a whole year because I stayed, because I called 911. So, you guys are all concerned and Jason Conley actually wants to make it a misdemeanor for trespass so police can then search people. But Will was just riding through the park and he rang his bell and somebody got offended. Next thing you know, I'm getting threatened to be killed. The guy goes to jail, he got, he got out the next day because I seen him downtown in my neighborhood. Road right past me, didn't even recognize me. So, this is really concerning. I hope you do do something because there's no reason why a bunch of people on drugs should be in the park at midnight, 2 o'clock in the morning, just like in the daytime. The other day, there was like 40 something kids, you know? People are getting stabbed downtown, too. But thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Justice for All and Anwar Peace, then Maygrah Flatman by phone.
I would say it's an injustice to have to speak for two minutes on four ordinances. That is not enough time at all. First, I wanted to talk about the parks ordinance. Yeah, this is 100% to target unhoused individuals, whether you codify police discretion or not. This is a 100% attack on unhoused individuals using officer discretion. We're going to see that those people that have been shot in the police report that we did receive about this, a lot of Pacific Islanders are part of that. So, I'm wondering how officer discretion is going to work with people who have a language barrier with the officers or the park rangers, since those are also the people getting the same kind of authority in this decision. And it is changing it from an infraction. Currently, there is a punishment for being in the parks after dark. There is a punishment. It should not be an arrestable offense. That is ridiculous, that 90 days is a ridiculous amount of time to, to literally be in jail for being in the parks after dark. The last bus ends at 11:30. The parks are usually the safest place and pathways for people to cross through. I know you're going to say, "Well, as long as they're listening to whoever tells them to get out of the park." We know, we know how officer discretion works. We know whether or not you codify it or not. We know that it's not fair, that there's, it's inequitable. Sorry, that's only one of the four ordinances that I did want to talk about tonight. The other ones was the updating the new drug law. That should have, again, the hurry, the emergency ordinance that was passed to criminalize from a misdemeanor to gross misdemeanor, that is a huge percentage of change. That is 20, 270% increase in time served. That is, again, a ways that we want to just fill our, our, the new jail that we're, the county is planning on building, which is, again, a huge mistake. It's historically Spokane is going to be seen as very regressive and really far in the past, especially with all the things that we do end up passing here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anwar, and after Anwar Maygrah by phone, and then Christine Shuler. Welcome.
My name is Anwar Peace, a Spokane resident and the Chair of the Spokane Human Rights Commission. Last week, the Commission's Executive Committee wrote a letter to the city council regarding this park ordinance, in which that letter from commissioners raised concerns based upon the lens of both human rights as well as legal and constitutional issues with this ordinance and requested that the city council decline to adopt this order, ordinance, excuse me. This letter can be found on the Human Rights Commission's Facebook page, and the following are portions from that letter. Quote, "As officers of a body with the mandate to advise and make recommendations to the city council regarding issues relating to human rights and unjust discrimination and the implication of programs consistent with the needs of all residents of the City of Spokane, we write to address the proposed amendment, which would reclassify the penalty for being in the park after close from a civilian infraction to a criminal misdemeanor. In recent years, there's been a constant back and forth with regards to police, police authority and accountability. Something horrendous happens to a person at the hands of police and activists call for reforms and oversights. Other times, an uptick in violent or property crimes helps garner support for the increase of power and authority granted to law enforcement. Public safety and police accountability are goals we all share. It is important, though, we, to consider the impacts this proposal will undoubtedly have on the interactions between police and citizens in the parks after hours. We fear this will exacerbate the divide between police and community members and increase the numbers of people incarcerated for nonviolent crimes, all of which will create turmoil for their families and our community at large. We are being told..."
Anwar, we're at the end of your time.
You can see this website on our website.
But thank you, and thanks, thanks for your letter. All right, next is Maygrah Flatman, if you want to dial star three, if you're still there. You're there. Welcome, Maygrah, you have up to two minutes.
America has experienced the death of the third place. The third place is any social space other than work and home to unwind, spend time, and decompress. Further restricting what few third places are left, especially what few free third places exist, is removing what little social interactions Spokaneites have left. Teens and young adults have increasingly fewer free legal spaces to exist. Simply existing in the park after dark should not warrant a misdemeanor. Additionally, homeless people do not have access to shelters. Trent Shelter is extremely far away, it is too far to get to, and Cannon Street is always full, Hope is always full, there are zero other places that are low barrier for women who are homeless to seek shelter for the night. Spokane's law enforcement has repeatedly stated that they will prosecute to the fullest extent of the law. Criminalizing Spokane's youth or anyone else for socializing in the only free third place available to them is shockingly punitive. Also, with drug and opioid use, jail is not a solution. The 2022 Point in Time Count, which has been regarded by service providers as a severe undercount, shows at least 1,757 people homeless in Spokane. An unfortunate side effect of not having access to shelter or a home means those with addictions use drugs in public spaces. No one believes it is okay to use drugs publicly. But jail is not a solution. Further punitive non-solutions will not magically change addiction. People with addictions, especially those who do not have homes, need mental health services and addiction treatment. Dozens of people have died in Spokane County Jail, including those with medical emergencies and suffering withdrawals. Spokane does not need more jail, which has been proven to already not solve any drug-related problems. Spokane needs to instead divert money to implement services, which have been proven to reduce recidivism, save lives, and save money. Thank you.
Maygrah, all right, thank you for timing yourself. Appreciate it. Christine Shuler, and then John Alder, and then Scott Ward.
Hello again. My true name is Seven. My legal name wasn't given into me till I was way an adult. I'm not even, still not used to it. Anyway, I'm talking here about the 394, which is the parks. I support that. And this is another example about a bad law. When people write laws, they need to be logical and intelligent. They need to see ahead. They need to be able to look five, 10, 20, 50 years down the road when they write laws. And somebody wrote this law in a bad way, and now look what's happened. Okay, it used to be different, then they changed it, and now it's a mess because they weren't smart. They were illogical, they didn't care, they didn't pay attention to the details, whatever. This is an example that to write a good law is important. The tiniest detail is the most important. So, I support it. And what else I want to say is, there's a lot of people tonight that were talking about how the police chief and the corrupt cops, which there's a lot of, they need to be held accountable. How dare the chief of police not be accountable? How, you know, like, you're supposed to be special rule, special treatment, yet right now on this ordinance, there's a whole bunch of people that want special treatment for homeless people or poor people. Okay, it shouldn't happen. If the, if the parks are closed, then they're closed. It doesn't matter if somebody's homeless or not homeless. Being homeless is not against the law, but it does not give anybody the right to violate laws. Okay? And so, that's why I support this, and, and it's a shame on everybody who thinks that they should be able to violate the park is closed law while they demand that the police officers be held accountable. Everybody should be held accountable for all the laws, no matter how small the law is or how large it is.
Thanks for coming down. John Alder. And after John, Scott Ward, and then Zach McEck.
Can't believe I stayed awake this long. I'm speaking about the curfew in parks. This law is clearly aimed at the homeless population that has no home or at least is not comfortable in any shelters that exist right now. Our society unfortunately is clearly aimed at pushing aside the folks that need help because they're in their way, like a broom cleaning a sidewalk. Why a person that come from a church that believes in the opposite? When you need a home, you give them a home, not jail. You can build tiny homes, 30% of income studios, et cetera, transition housing. Instead of a levy to build a new jail for $300 million, why don't you spend that on a levy that guarantees a home for everybody, for everybody, not a jail that exposes people to inhuman conditions. Sweep misdemeanors, punish those that need help. The Christian way is to help those that need a helping hand. Jesus Christ, who I believe in, would follow, would offer bread for the hungry, medicine for the homeless, and last but not least, shelter for the homeless. We are, the homeless are people, they're not parasites. Give them respect and love they need.
Thanks, John. All right, Scott Ward, then Zach McEck, and then Crystal Berger.
Yeah, I just want to talk really about the park ordinance. There's so much focus on criminalization. We already have laws that, you know, punish people if they're assaulting people or, you know, doing things that are dangerous to the community in a park, right? So, we don't need to add a law that could imprison someone for just existing in a park, right? Okay? So, if we want to get to the bottom of the root causes of these issues where clearly, again, this is going to criminalize unhoused people, why don't we spend all this time we're talking about this ordinance and actually do some things like social housing and rent control to make sure that people have their needs met, that they don't have to be in, in a park at night, that they can be in their home, right? And so, there's so much focus on criminalization of poverty and little focus on ending it. As I said, this will target unhoused people and it will also target those who are housed, who are too hot at night. Jack Archer shared a great, a really fascinating story about, you know, heat and, and the effect on, on their baby. Officer discretion was also mentioned in this ordinance, and that's not like, that's not like a positive thing. Ask George Floyd's family, or Tamir Rice's family, or Tyree Nichols, or David Novak's family about officer discretion. That, that doesn't help anybody. Really, this is just going to criminalize black, brown, indigenous, and young people, okay, in this park. Okay, so, let's take all this time we're focusing on trying to put a Band-Aid on things and get to the root cause. We've been trying to criminalize our way out of violence and suffering in this society for 40-plus years at least, okay? And it hasn't worked at all. We have unprecedented levels of suffering and violence. We look at what's going on with, with mass violence in our schools, no, no other country has that, yet we've tried to solve our problems by further criminalizing more than any other country, and it hasn't worked.
Thanks for coming down. Zach McEck, and then Crystal, and then Dave Bilsland.
Yeah, my name's Zach.
Yeah, my name is Zachary McGuckin. I'm a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation, and on behalf of myself as an individual and the PSL, I'm condemning this law, referring to the Parks After Dark ordinance. Both variations that further criminalize being in the park because this law is racist, sexist, homophobic. If you look at who this law is going to be criminalizing, it's going to be criminalizing poor people. It's going to be criminalizing women escaping domestic violence. It's going to be criminalizing trans kids escaping homophobic families. It's going to be criminalizing the homeless. It's going to be criminalizing drug addicts. And so voting for this law is going to increase the suffering of all these people groups exponentially. I'm wearing this shirt that I got in, when I visited Cuba. I was given to it by a member of their electricians union. And when I was in that country, I saw a society that less than 1% of the, of the population is without a home. So this is achievable, but we need to say no to further criminalization, no to racism, no to homophobia, no to being anti-poor, no to capitalism, and no to this ordinance. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. All right, Crystal, welcome back.
Hello. This, I'm Crystal and co-founder at MAC Movement. I want to remind you, we're working with a lot of people out there. So this ordinance doesn't address the drug crisis the way the ordinance supporters are hoping, because the drugs are already illegal. We, the taxpayers also own these parks. Just because someone doesn't have a home doesn't mean they aren't contributing in other ways to our society as well as these parks. We at MAC Movement are regularly in communication with friends and citizens living on the street, and I can honestly say I know many who are working already and already can't sit and lie on the sidewalks at any hour. Your ordinance specifically targets them as well as women and people of color. I myself, on another note, I myself have a very active dog, and sometimes find myself getting home late. I live about 10-minute walk from Riverfront and a 15-minute walk from Coeur d'Alene Park. There's a small patch of grass right in front of a small local business, and then a very neglected riverside dog park. What is stopping them from using their unchecked bias against me on my next late-night dog walk? I'm low-income, living downtown. I have nowhere else to walk my dog. Sometimes I'm already wearing my dirty, or I'm still wearing my dirty work clothes. My record shows I got stacked, stacked tickets, and my record shows that I have a high chance of being a target for these tickets, for these arrests, for taking my dog down, simply trying to take my dog downtown. There's no barrier there to keep me safe. And I found myself on a random Tuesday at Riverfront Park, late, walking my dog, and I suddenly got anxiety, not because I was worried about anybody in the park on drugs or somebody being homeless. I was worried about the police coming and coming to remove me because I was walking my dog late, so.
Thanks for coming down. All right, Dave Bilson.
Dave Bilson, I live in Logan. One of the problems that we're going to have with this ordinance is going to shift all this illegal activity into private home areas and business areas. Because if you get them out of the park, where else are they going to go? Anybody thought of that? What are you going to do with these people? Private property, business property, that's the only other alternative to parks. They're just going to be more trouble for business owners and more trouble for homeowners and apartment buildings and everybody else outside of it. At least in the parks, they're not messing with the rest of everybody else because the rest of everybody else is staying out of the park. And besides, you want to go chasing them through the, 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 uh, business areas or the residential areas, or do you want to chase them through the park? If they're in the park, they're easy to find.
Thanks for coming down, Dave. Alexis Tenasket. And after Alexis is Michelle Pappas, if she's still on the video. Welcome.
Liam Limt. I have still halt. He's in Kailukuskuis Kowachloat. And I wanted to touch on a couple of unintended consequences from this potential ordinance. We just had our first Two-Spirit Powwow this weekend at Riverfront Park, and unfortunately, we did reach out to some parks and rec officials, and we were not, we were honestly dismissed. We were asked, we were asking to have our Indian encampment because this is our traditional homelands, and this is the river that my family and many other families have always come to and come back to since time immemorial. And we were not allowed to have that encampment. And that is a, that is the biggest threat to my life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, much more than seeing a homeless person or seeing someone even who is suffering from an addiction. That is my culture. These are my homelands. This is an unintended consequence. That would be unraveling decades and decades and lifetimes worth of work and on this reconciliation and on rebuilding relationships and on having access to our own homelands. Also, it would be an issue of public safety because there are already not enough bathrooms for people to use. So if we close the parks at night, there's already people going to, using the restroom, and there's defecation and vomit and all kinds of human bodily fluids on the streets. There will just be more, the more we close down bathrooms. It's not smart. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Anton, if you want to make your way down. Just checking, Michelle Pappas, I don't know if you're still online, we're checking. Okay, she's not here. Anton, you're the last one.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Well, I just want to say that instead of passing ordinances to make it illegal for people to be in the park at nighttime, why don't we work with something like the policies, to change the policies that, you know, each group, department function on, to make them much more broader than narrower, that restrict a lot, that limits you guys' position to make decisions. You know, that's just the same thing that we just talked about a while ago about the ombudsman. I'm pretty sure there's a policy somewhere that dictates that. Go over there, you know, have that changed. And I'm opposed to that, and I do appreciate you guys and that we have to voice ourselves, you know? And yeah, that's it. Just no, I am opposed to that. I urge you not to pass that. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Anton. That brings us to the end of our legislative agenda. I want to give special thanks to all of you who stuck it out all these hours and participated robustly and respectfully. So thank you for that. I want to thank all of our staff members who are here, who stayed very late, including our TV5 people, including our police officers and security people. And I want to thank all our members for their civil discourse and problem-solving and open-mindedness to trying to make Spokane better than it is. And I ask you all to take care of yourself, and if you can, take care of someone else. We're off next Monday for Juneteenth. We'll see you back on the 26th. We're adjourned.[1760.86]